Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, will you have any agenda items to change or add this evening? John?
I would add under the Ways and Means Committee report, the request from the Fairfield Volunteer Center for additional funding.
Okay. And that was in your notes that everyone received? Thank you. Anything else, Counsel? Before we move to our consent agenda and begin our meeting, I want to take some time right now to recognize, thank, and really deeply, deeply appreciate on behalf of the city, three of our employees from the Park and Rec Center who were involved in saving a life of a citizen who was drowning at the pool. I think everyone is aware of the event, but there were heroic things that were accomplished during that very critical period of time where this young man's life was saved. And we want to recognize those very, very important young people in our community who did what they were trained to do, but at the same time did it in a way that was most effective and represented our city in the highest way. So, we have some plaques that we would like to present them tonight, and I think I'll go out to the podium to do that. First, I'd like to ask Riley Hamel, Paige Palmer, and Dorothy Henson to come up to the podium. I know you probably really hate all this attention, but I'm sorry, when something so good and so wonderful and a good news story happens in our community, something that's going to be meaningful to a family and a young man in this community for the rest of his life, we do want to take the time to thank you. And Riley, I believe you're the one who formed the resuscitation in the event, so thank you very much for your heroic deed. Paige, I believe you were the one who went and got the equipment necessary to continue the lifesaving effort to defibrillate. Thank you very much. Dorothy, you made the 911 call and got our forces there as quickly as possible to help them everything they could. Thank you. Okay, next Counsel will move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for the April 22 meeting. We have a resolution for employment for Park and Recreation, Lyndon Norton and Stacia Leonard. We have a resolution for employment in our fire department, part-time firefighter, Justin Bonnet. Approval of liquor licenses for Pizza Hut, Doc's Inn Cafe, Veterans Club, Hy-Vee, and Adellas. And approval of claims in the amount of $312,105.83. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
I need to tell you that Veterans Club is, needs to be removed.
Okay.
That was a one-day permit for RagBri, and they found out RagBri won't let them.
Okay.
So, they are taking it off the agenda.
Move the amended agenda.
Okay, moved by Revolinsky, second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Next Counsel, we have our public forum for appearances before the Council. We have eight requests tonight, and as you all read your applications as you were filling them out, this is a two- to three-minute section per, so we'll try and keep to that if we can. First, we have representatives from French Rinneker, Melanie Carlson, and Dave Fredericks, who were recently recognized for some work that we did at, we just recently completed at the wastewater treatment plant, and it was a great, great news and great recommendation, so recognition, I'm sorry. If you could fill us in on that, Melanie?
Yep. On May 2nd, the City of Fairfield and French Rinneker Associates received an award for the sludge storage tank project at the wastewater treatment plant. With the snow, Kevin and Sean weren't able to make it up to the meeting, to the banquet, so we wanted just to take a few minutes to recognize the city's efforts in this project. The award received was the honor award in the water and wastewater category as part of the American Council of Engineering Companies of Iowa Engineering Excellence Award. The engineering excellence awards are designed to recognize outstanding engineering achievement by engineering firms. We recognize the important role that the owner has in the project and would like to thank the city for the opportunity, particularly Sean Worley with the wastewater department, and the Counsel Darren Hamilton, Chair of the Utilities Committee. Dee Fredericks, the design engineer on the project, has a plaque. If Sean, and I don't know if Darren, or the mayor, or Kevin wants to come up, then we can take a picture and I'll keep reading in essence of time.
I think Sean ought to be the one who received this.
Yeah.
I'll read through the application while they hand the plaque, I guess. The project included the construction of a wastewater biosolid storage system, including a 1.1 million gallon storage tank. This project was, is one of several wastewater improvement projects required by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources that are now in operation at the Fairfield wastewater treatment plant. These projects were designed by French Rinneker Associates of Fairfield. The biosolid storage system was constructed by Grooms &amp; Company Construction of Atomo, Iowa, at the cost of $3,652,000. When you reach the end of the plant's entrance road, the silver geodesic dome roof and blue steel tank jumps into view, in case any of you drive by 34 and wonder what that big tank is, that's what it is. The tank is 90 feet in diameter and 28 feet tall. The tank project has been designed to minimize maintenance and to load a tanker truck quickly for optimal land application. The project eliminated a significant bottleneck in the treatment process. Previously, there was minimal storage of biosolids, which required the city's single land application truck to operate weekly. This affected plant performance, and over the years, biosolids were put into the stormwater detention basins. These basins were initially constructed to temporarily store a portion of the excess water reaching the treatment plant and release it back to the plant when flow decreases. Adding the biosolid storage, or adding the biosolids to the stormwater ponds significantly reduced the capability to store water temporarily. Now, the biosolid storage tank is in operation. The city has removed the remainder of the biosolids from the stormwater ponds to maximize their capacity. This increased storage will reduce the flow to the treatment plant and incrementally reduce the sewer overflows at the treatment plant. This project has eliminated several system deficiencies. There are still many challenges remaining to the Fairfield sanitary sewer system and wastewater treatment plant, but this project has been a significant first step. So, we thank the city for this opportunity, and Sean for helping us get it completed.
Great, thank you very much. We're really appreciative of the partnership that we have with French Rinneker, and also congratulations on producing a project that would receive this level of recognition. Thank you very much. Next is Marilyn Dio.
Dio.
Dio, I'm sorry Marilyn. So, it sounds like you had an unfortunate event.
Yes, I did. April 30th, I was attacked by a dog, a white bulldog with black collar. It was loose down in 1300 West Jackson. I just came from the grocery store to pick up my meat. I backed my car in, and I set it on the trunk. I went like that, and the dog attacked me. He was after the meat, and I think he was loose straying. That's all I know. He was a different dog when he seen the meat. I fell back, hit my head. I turned around and I had to crawl to the car because he was loose. He went over to the neighbor's yard and then came back to me. I had to hurry up in the backseat to throw the meat in the backseat. I think there should be better laws. If it was a child, it would have killed it. I need, there should be better laws on the dogs. Was not registered, was not feed, and did not have shots. And I'm still worked up about it because I haven't left the doctor yet, because my vision is blurry, I'm a diabetic, and I have a heart condition. It just took me down like a hot potato. And I think there should be better laws about people that can't register and take care of their dogs. That's all he wanted to do was just laugh at me. The neighbor said thank you, and I told him to shut up because it wasn't his dog. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Marilyn. You know, we're really sorry that that happened, and Chief, I want to just check with you first. So, we did find the owner of the dog?
We did find the owner of the dog. It's kind of a long, convoluted story. The female half that lives in this trailer moved out. The male half had a court order prohibiting him from going there. Then, a neighbor man was taking care of the dog. It chewed through the fence, or the skirting on the trailer and got out. He was given seven days to register the dog or, and/or get rid of it. Once, one of my new guys did it, so he didn't know how to check for dog license, once he was aware that, how to check with the dog license. Since then, the dogs moved on. The civil issue with the medical bills.
What do you mean by moved on?
The dog's been moved, he's given it to another owner because he's not able to get down to the trailer and take care of the dog properly.
Excuse me. If he was, the neighbor was watching it, why was there a lady, May 1st, had the same complication?
Okay, we're just, we're getting the chief's report now.
I'm just telling Mike.
Okay, thanks.
So, the male owner, or the guy that was taking care of it, Scott, was told that if the dog got out again, he was going to be cited for it. He went over, fixed the skirting, and then, since then, the dog has been removed from the city, so.
Okay. Counsel, any other, any other comments?
So, the dog is no longer in city limits?
Correct. It's over in Mount Pleasant right now.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we do-
Excuse me, if it was a child, it would have killed it.
Yes, ma'am. We have very strict laws for that breed, correct?
This is a bulldog.
Bulldog.
Bulldog, but is that in the dangerous?
No, it's not.
And if that breed is not, okay.
No.
It may not be in the dangerous category, but what I recall from the ordinance-
Once it attacks, then it puts it into that category.
Yes.
That's why he was given the seven days to make arrangements, fix the fencing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so we did what we, what the dog ordinance basically requires us to do?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And then, we get numerous complaints. We come up on stray animals or whatever and pick them up. We usually try to work with the owners if they haven't registered the dogs and give them a time period, whether it's two weeks or whatever, to get the dogs registered and come in compliance with the registration policy.
I have a question.
Yes.
Set for Julie Harvey. Why, when the dog catcher man Watson left, why didn't he rehire one? Now, we gotta wait 50 minutes. The child could have been dead.
Marilyn, we're gonna, we're gonna end the discussion here. Just, there's, he wasn't a dog catcher at the time. We don't, we haven't had a dog catcher.
Well, he came down.
Yeah, he, the police, the police department is responsible for dog complaints, but we don't have a designated dog catcher. And I think the point that we'll take away from this also is, you know, the thing that bothers me is the registration, and there's more public notice that we should do to make sure that dogs in the community are registered. It's difficult to be proactive, very proactive beyond that, but I think that we should come up with a strategy to bet, to be better equipped with dog registration.
Excuse me, why did it take twice? Why didn't he get a seal cage?
We're gonna move on to our next person addressing the Counsel, and that'll be Dan Tudor.
I'd like to comment on that.
Dan, Dan, you have three to five minutes at the microphone here on your issue, and I think you should use it for yours.
I'd like to say that in that incident, somebody should have got like a ticket, like to prevent that.
Yes.
Because people, cops are going around trying to ticket people, pedestrians, skateboarders, bicyclists, mainly low-income people, for doing nothing. And for your incidents, that actually threatened your life. If it had been me, it could have threatened my life, and that's actually a real danger.
Dan, can we get to your issue, please, specifically?
And that is a real, that brings me to my issue, because police officers in Fairfield are wasting time.
Can you tell us what, what happened? Where were, where did you receive your ticket?
I was in that area. It was a cold December night.
Where, is this the issue that you brought before us a couple of months ago? Same issue?
It is, the same issue. But no, no, it's different because it still affects the poor people of Fairfield like myself. And let me finish what I'm saying, because I never finished off my other statement. Dogs and people robbing people's apartments and people attacking people, those are real incidences of real dangers. A bicyclist going in the wrong direction not threats, especially if it's like for five seconds. And not only that, but the court system is just a self-designed to hurt poor people. There should have been a lawyer there to represent an innocent, poor person who has no way, no sway, doesn't know the court system at all, like myself, and I'm not the only one. Tired of going to jail for nothing. I went to jail that night, and I didn't do anything, didn't hurt anybody. This person, this dog owner, went and attacked this lady, could have attacked me, and they weren't even fined. They didn't go to jail. I went to jail for nothing, and I'm tired of going to jail for nothing. And putting us, me in jail is not going to quiet my voice. I will be in front of the city council raising donations, because that $220 ticket is a lot when you only made $200 last year. That's how much I made. So, when you're trying to garnish my bank account, I got a letter in the mail talking about, oh, we want to garnish your bank account, we want to garnish your wages, we want to suspend your license. My bicycle is my car, and a car and a motor vehicle versus a bicycle is two different things. A motor vehicle, when you find it, the cheapest car you possibly, possibly get is like $5,000, maybe $4,000. A bicycle costs maybe 50 or 60, maybe $100. So, that's more than the cost of my bicycle. And I'd like to say that even in the article that I submitted with the Counsel, in 2010, the police said they were cracking down on bicyclists, trying to keep them safe. People have commented they've seen police hiding in the bushes, you know, trying, just following bicyclists around waiting to get them a ticket when there are real crimes going on.
Dan, I'm ready to gavel. When I gavel, you're done. Okay, so are you done?
Um, I think so.
I think you're done. Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments for Dan? Okay. Next person addressing the Counsel will be Jessica Garchik about the Fairfield Public Library Reading Program.
Hello. I'm here from the Fairfield Public Library, and we're preparing for our summer reading kickoff, which is the first Saturday in June every year, so that's June 1. And it takes place between 1:00 and approximately 4:30 in the afternoon. And normally, what we do is block off the street in front of the library, and so I'm here asking for permission to do that. We're having the conservation station come down. They volunteered their time. They're coming down with about a 40-foot trailer to teach, you know, kids. It's kind of an open house to teach them about conservation of Iowa's resources, and so we're hoping that we can block off the street just to make it safe for people.
Sure. And, I'm sorry, what is the date again, Jessica?
June 1.
June 1, and you have a map that's accompanying this, so it would be just that entire block between Second and Main on Washington?
That's correct.
Okay.
We do have a parking lot, so we'll continue to allow people to have access to the park so they can get in and out. And then, there is an alley there.
Yeah, yeah.
I move for approval of the request.
I'll second.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Boyer to approve the library's summer reading kickoff program event on June 1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request from Jen Butler about the, should be the 26th Annual Power Wagon Rally. Is Jen's here? Okay, I know Counsel that that is coming up. This is an annual event where we have the power, Vintage Dodge Power Wagon Rally and Parade. We generally do block off the square. I get the request. Chief, has someone from the Power Wagon Rally contacted you about?
Yes, we already have the arrangements made.
Okay, so that, that has been done. Again, this, I thought last year was the 25th Annual, so I think we're probably in year 26. It's a great event, brings people from all over the country into our community for sometimes as long as a week, and it really kicks off a very busy June this year. So, I recommend approval of the request by Vintage Power Wagon Rally for the use of the square for their events.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. Nicholas Naoti would like to introduce himself to the community. Nicholas, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. My name's Nicholas Sebastian Naoti. I am a new resident of Fairfield. I was born and raised in Branson, Missouri. Moved to Florida for college, got a science degree. Moved to Nashville, Tennessee, and had a seven-year career as a touring musician. Went to 49 states, played shows in most of them. And that's what brought me to Fairfield, actually. I played a show here and instantly felt really good about the town. Just felt right at home. And it has a really nice culture here, and it's a, it's a culture that doesn't exist in a lot of other places, and it's really special. Anyway, I moved here about five months ago, and I opened a restaurant. My restaurant is called The Garden Seasonal Kitchen. It's on the southwest corner of the square, basically right across the street. I'm really excited to be doing business here in Fairfield. Fairfield has a great economy compared to everywhere else I've ever lived, and the restaurant's doing really well. Wanted to thank the community for that. Also, really excited and passionate about setting up music and art events here. I wanted to thank the city for being so accommodating of, of the local culture. Coming from Tennessee, it's, it's a nice change, and I just, I'm grateful for that. I feel like there's a lot of support for art and for music, and that's, that's what brought me here, and that's what's gonna keep me here. And I'm planning to stay in Fairfield for a long time. I love this town, and I just wanted to encourage everybody here also to, like, just support, support culture here in town. Go out to Art Walk, go to galleries, go to shows, buy local music, just whatever you can do, because it's, it's humans, you know, it's what we are. And that's what makes Fairfield really great, and just wanted to encourage support for that and say thanks for everything, and introduced myself. And once again, my name's Nicholas. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicholas. You really, you reinforce your recognition, your thanks for the investments that we've made in culture and the arts, is really so that we can attract people like you to our community. So, thank you for coming. I also want to thank you because I understand that we're, as we go through our Blue Zone certification process, we have to find seven restaurants in our community who will go through all of the steps to qualify for the certification, and you have signed up for that, and your restaurant is probably the closest to being the first certified. So, thank you for helping us achieve our goal in that area, too.
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks also for investing in our community.
Yeah. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to a representative from American Legion. Is Harlan Yoder here?
Need to get dressed here and look official. Well, I wore this hat for one year, so I'm supposed to wear it on all occasions that I get a chance.
It's a nice hat.
Thank you, Mayor Malloy, and City Counsel for allowing me to dress you tonight. My name is Harlan Yoder, as I, as I was introduced by the mayor, and I'm American Legion Department of Iowa Vice Commander. And also with me tonight is Jim Kennedy back in the corner. He's the local American Legion Commander, Fairfield Post Number 47. Before I start, I'd like to ask if there's any veterans on the city council. Thank you for service. Do you belong to, you know, the veteran service organizations in town?
No.
I happen to have a
Julie, you would just have been recruited.
At any rate, the purpose of my visit tonight is to inform you of the open house at the Veterans Club on Wednesday, May 29. This event will not be just an American Legion function. It's open to all veterans, whether they're American Legion, AMVETS, VFW, VVA is Vietnam Vets for America, or DAV, Disabled American Vets. The event will be held from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Iowa City VA Claim Representative Gary Golson, Jefferson County Veteran Service Officer Ray Chambers will also attend. Also intended, will, in attendance will be current District Commander Gary Hefner. I was District Commander last year. I will be here. Bob Kennedy is the incoming District Commander. He will be here, and I think we will arrange to get representatives from the other two veteran service organizations to attend as well. Like to talk about programs and membership. Veteran can come in and check the claim, status of a claim, or see about filing a new claim and get into the VA system. Veterans never too old to file a claim. Claims are still be, being filed for World War II and Korean Arab vets. It should have had, been filed long ago. They were unaware of their rights under the, through the VA Veterans Administration. Membership is the lifeblood for any organization. American Legion, VFW, and AMVETS have not been immune to the ongoing decrease in membership experienced by the paternal organizations such as the moose, lions, elk, eagles, reiners, on down the line. Members are getting older, and younger guys aren't enjoying it, so. Membership for Post 47 has managed to hold steady, but the membership is aging. I think the high-water mark for the local post is 550. At one time, we're down to about 70. Commander Kennedy is 82. Agent Dave Peck is 88, and they both like to step down. They've served long and faithfully, so hopefully with this open house, we'll stir up some interest and maybe we'll get some new members that want to step in and get active. We're willing to train, do whatever it takes. So, finding new leadership is a priority. Locally, Post 47 participates in the Boy State Program. That's an annual camp for government, basically. It's held at Camp Dodge up in, up in Des Moines, and I was talking with the commander earlier today, said they also sponsor the Girl Staters. They've got a similar camp called Annual Ames. Post also performs military honors for its fallen members and any, and any other veteran in the community who's not a member of a veteran service organization. Veterans' Day Services are a popular event in the community, also conducted by Post 47. Like you to stop to think what an active American Legion post means to a community, how much the veterans and the youth of this community are short-changed if there isn't one. There would be no service officer to help with the claims or hospitalization or death benefits. No high school students at Boy State or participating in other Legion programs. Most importantly, no place for veterans to make themselves heard. So, in conjunction with this, Commander and I, and Gary Hefner, and try to get Ray Chambers in on this. We're going to be on the radio next Wednesday on, I think it's 8:30 or 8:45 time slot in, in the morning, so.
That's our spotlight show, usually 8:30, I think, yeah.
I have a letter, if I am allowed, I have a letter to the editor. If I, I know you have a busy agenda tonight.
Go ahead, sir.
If I can read that in, into the record and have you sign it, and I'm sure there's somebody from the ledger here that would be glad to take it in. somebody from the ledger here that would be glad to take it in.
Right in front.
Get your paper. Fairfield Ledger, on May 13th, your City Council is addressed by the local American Legion Post Number 47 Commander Jim Kennedy here in Fairfield, and also by Department of Iowa Vice Commander Harlan Yoder. They're encouraging community support for a public awareness effort so they can continue to do great things that we as a patriotic community may have taken for granted. While being a member of the local American Legion Post 47 is beneficial to the military veterans in Fairfield, it's equally important that we bring them the support as a community that is proud of their service to our country. We count on them to raise the flag at our home football games, perform honors for their fallen comrades and their families, seek out and give scholarships and awards to our youth, such as American Legion Boy State Oratorical, Junior Shooting Fifth Grade Flag Essay Contest, most of all to be a solid unified voice on issues that protect this great land. The American Legion Post Number 47 members, along with state and district officers, will be on hand for an open house on Wednesday, May 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Veterans Hall. They will have a state service officer present, as well as a Jefferson County Veterans Affairs Representative, who are prepared to answer benefit and claim issues our brave veterans may be facing. And we encourage all military veterans to stop in for refreshments and visit with your fellow comrades, and maybe even volunteer your services in some small way so that they may continue to be the asset that we have, that have come to appreciate in Fairfield. Sincerely, Mayor Malloy.
Great, thank you very much for penning a letter. I'm honored.
And then, I'd also like to have the events scheduled and placed on public access, if that would be possible. And then I will contact First Sergeant Cryle at the local armory and, and get the guard involved in, in this event, too, so.
Good.
Is there any questions?
You came to right, to the right place to get everything accomplished. Tonight, I think we'll, we'll definitely do everything we can to support the event. We have a Facebook page for the city, we'll get the event on that as well. And I'd like to ask the council to support this event with a motion. Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you, Ms. Yoder.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Jim, thank you very much, too. And we hope we can find you...
Oh, I was remiss. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Don't go ahead.
Jim, we hope we can refine, we can find a replacement, but I think you still have a few good years left in you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Next, council, we have requests from the Jefferson County Fair Board for the Jefferson County Parade. It's that time of year. Dennis Thomas here. Hello, Dennis.
Well, I'd like permission to have a parade. Fair time is, uh, June 25th. Is that right, Chief?
That's, June 25th is the Friday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
No, it's on...
To Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday before the Wednesday opening of the fair.
That's the day before, night before.
Yeah, night before. Tuesday before the Wednesday opening of the fair.
Yeah, right. I think it's the 25th.
Yeah, Fair Parade, 25th.
Yeah.
I'd get to my calendar.
I've already talked to the chief, and I talked with Fred MacLeary. We could use the high school parking lot to get into stage and end up there. We'd like to come up Broadway and go north on Main and then back down Briggs. And I, I think the chief accepts and ragby riders being a parade for advertising for that, so.
Very good.
He promised to put us in front of the horses.
It sounds like you're riding. Very good. Well, yes, I mean, obviously, it's, we're, we're really happy to be celebrating that again this year, and I'd recommend to council that we approve the request for the parade route. Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you, Dennis. Hope we have some great weather.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, pardon me? Yeah. Next, council, we're moving to our resolution and action items, ordinances. We are first gonna have a public hearing on a proposed Highway 34 West Business Urban Renewal Plan. And if our city attorney's here, is John here? There he is. Hi, John. Great, if you could speak to what we'll be taking action on tonight, John?
Yes, your packet has what has already been discussed with our other public bodies in the community, and been in front of planning and zoning. Essentially, the plan's approved and it encompasses an area of a few acres, about five acres out by Walmart, immediately east. The Community First Expansion of their facility. Community First Credit Union's plans have already been publicized, but the area in which that growth will occur will result in some increased increment of value to the property. So the plan area is intended to encompass that, plus some area to the north of it, that is potentially two or three commercial growth area lots. And it also encompasses the right-of-way in the Burlington Street area immediately adjacent to it. So if there's any street work that has to be done, it'll be included in the area of improvement, as far as cost of improvements adding to increment. So the first thing we need to do is conduct a public hearing and see if there is anyone that has anything to say about this, and then move on, hopefully to adopt the plan. You have a copy of the plan and the map, and it's been gone over with you before. And then we'll move on, if the plan is adopted, to consider an ordinance that relates to the plan and the tax increment that can be drawn from the plan area.
Okay, thanks, John. So we'll declare the public hearing open at this time and receive any public comment on the proposed urban renewal plan in Tiff District. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public hearing. And John, what will our next step be?
Resolution, and the resolution adopts the plan. It is attached to the plan and basically recites for you the things preliminary to adoption, the resolutions have already been done, including a review of the plan by the Planning and Zoning Commission, their recommendation that it be approved. And so at this point, the appropriate step, if the council is in agreement, that this is appropriate area for urban renewal, under our state code, should be a motion to adopt a resolution.
Okay, thanks, John. So you have a, you have the resolution written on your agenda, council? That's the language you'll be approving, so if there's someone who would make a motion to approve the resolution determining the area of the city to be an economic development area?
Move to approve resolution.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, John.
So, Kevin, um, in our discussion privately after our Ways and Means Committee, you were talking about a kind of a creative approach to this urban renewal plan, but here I see on the, on the map that's with the attachment here, it's just that block of land right behind Community First is what's involved with this. It's nothing more than that. Is that right? I just want to clarify, because we had said something different in that, in private.
Yes, it's a, an important clarification. Because of the timeline, we kind of got, we were moving ahead quickly on this one, kind of trying to expedite it, and we have a little time left on the amendment, which will be the recreation area.
I see.
So we'll be adding it, probably within the next week, we're gonna be having some over-the-phone meetings with Ayers and Cooney to go ahead and get that amendment structured. We'll be, I was gonna hit this a little later, but I'm glad you mentioned it. We'll be employing Marcia Corey with Simmering and Corey, I think is the name of the firm. They had worked with Ayers and Cooney quite a lot on different urban renewal plans, and she's a planner with that, uh, firm. And so we'll be using her services to help craft the plan amendments that we're working on otherwise, as well as the, in this area, as well as on the Highway 1 Tiff District we're looking at, because Pat is gonna be gone for a couple of weeks, be real busy out of town. I think she's doing some seminars. So we hope to bring all that to fruition over the next couple of weeks before our next meeting, but, yes, it's not in there presently, but it will be a recommended amendment.
So we may see a amended version of this.
The resolution is, is general for the purpose?
Yeah.
And the ordinance that we'll take next will be first reading, so if there's a amendment, come back in second reading.
Right. I, that's, I understand. I do have one more question, just about the, this, you know, plan for this area. I know we had talked about putting in a, a new street. I don't know if that'd be 25th Street or something off of Burlington to go into Walmart there? And then perhaps doing another, another street behind, uh, to the north of Burlington, which would be Broadway, West Broadway. I'm wondering if, if there any discussion about connecting up with 26th Street there on the, on the north? So that there'd be access from Grimes?
Yeah, we'll have a plan for the actual construction portion of this pretty soon for council to look at, but basically it comes in off of Burlington, going north to a point, and we also had to kind of separate the, our initial plans had it almost being adjacent to the Walmart parking lot, but it wasn't good for the, the through traffic of their parking lot, basically. Can't, the city street can't go directly in, so a bit of a stub had to come off that street to connect to our city street, but it goes north and then stops and turns and goes east, and would connect to our city street inevitably, down the line, quite a distance from there, but we're just looking at this first phase being the property line of the Community First. And then it opens up all that property in the back, and, and further improvements would be financed by other projects, assuming, assuming, you know, commercial nature for those. So, um, you know, we're not, we, we don't have to do this. Of course, the two entrances presently for the Community First are gonna be coming off Burlington, so it really, it's ironic, because we were in a hurry on this one, and then as, as development, you know, projects often do, it changed a little bit, and they wanted their entrance to be off Burlington, which we didn't have a problem with them being off Burlington. So basically, that one slowed down, and our other one on Highway 1 sped up, and so we are soon to be coming forward with that as well. We decided to split those districts and have one Tiff District here on 34, commercial Tiff District, Economic Development District, one Economic Development District on Highway 1. We call Crossroads, we have been calling it that, and one housing district down there as well. So we're making a little bit more simplified version of what we were gonna do, just because of the distance of the right-of-way through that area and the complication of doing that. But the amendment we'll bring forward will basically include whatever properties we're including from the rec side of it, in order to make us capable of using our mechanisms, you know, on a financial level that we're talking about. We hit on some of this a little bit later on, too, in further conversation, but...
But again, my question was, so if we're putting in Broadway, it's only, right now our plan is only that there'll be access off to the east, but not, if we go to the west there, we'd hit 26th Street, which already connects with Grimes, is what the point I'm making. I would like to see that. I think it'd be handy for people on the north side of town, coming to Walmart, coming to those areas.
To go both ways?
Yeah, then you could come up Grimes on 26th, and you could get to Walmart. You could, right now, you can't really, because you have to go all the way around to the other side of Walmart.
Yeah, and you gotta look at what you, what we'd be doing to that property, too. We'd have to talk about it, I guess, because, you know, we'd have to have easements, and we're already securing, going through a little bit of trouble to secure one easement, we haven't got it done yet, I think, for the main entrance, which would be adjacent, or right across from, juxtaposed from the fairground entrance. That's where you go in at, so. And there's a piece of property there, we're trying to get, I think Walmart's also participating in it, to get it wide enough to actually put the city street, to get it to Turning Point to go east. But we could look at, you know, whether or not it would...
I think it's a good idea, John. I mean, nice to even get it platted if it's not, because even if we can't afford to do it at this point in time, since there isn't, it would at least be...
Opportunity in the future.
It's never a bad idea to get a street, to get a street platted if you can.
Right.
Yeah, well, we'll discuss it with the developers and get Tracy in on it, and we'll see what everybody thinks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Now we'll call the roll on the resolution.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamus?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Your motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to the ordinance portion. John, comments on that?
Yes, basically, now that you have an urban renewal district to do a tax increment arrangement in, you have the good fortune of the new development and its owner being completely willing to be included in a Tiff District, and they're not really looking for much from us. They assume that we'll do a good job with however the street arrangement services the area. They're aware that we're thinking about a street to the north of them going east, but they have no notions about pushing timing on that, and basically they're willing to be there, let their increment be drawn upon for that purpose as it arises, and we've got some time with our engineers and drafting to come up with the best kind of street arrangement for that. But to get the tax increment from that in place, we need to pass this particular ordinance before the end of our fiscal year, so that we can be looking at increment from it by 2014, I believe. So their plans for construction are to get their improvements in place late this summer. That will be assessed by our assessor and courthouse folks first of the year, and it will by the next fiscal year be a predictable amount of tax increment from that valuation.
When will we see what we're actually tying this to? In other words, the, the actual project, the actual construction project, and it, is it at that point that we will receive the, the length of this?
We've got some preliminary stuff going on with, first of all, Drish Enterprises has the land that is north of this and that the street would pass through, going back to the east. There's also two large parcel owners there. One of them is Finney, and one of them is the Lox family that is all-American, pest in that area. They're both preliminarily, I would say, engaged, but there haven't been any real commitments yet as far as exactly what that's gonna look like, just that the city has interest in trying to extend that. That would, in theory, make their development land more valuable, so probably not something they would have a problem with being done, but it's one of those drawings that hasn't been made exactly yet. You can see what sense it would make, though, to go all the way over to 20th Street, behind the car wash, and hook in there. It's a commercial hub in the west, or has been, and...
Yeah, I think one thing we need to remember, your honor, is basically we have to have a project that's gonna push the improvements. We do have a project now that gives us some equity increments, and right now, we're not really doing anything. It's gonna be worth about a million and a half dollars, which for us, we'd transfer into, you know, we get about $36,000 per million. So that's gonna transfer into a pretty good payment for us. We're looking at around $100,000 of yearly capability of abating debt there. So we feel like we have it fairly covered. If what we have been planning, we go ahead and do, we're not right now to the point of where we would recommend going ahead and doing that. No one's depending on us here. If there's any contract that's related to these projects, it would most likely be a simple deal between us and the Community First, that if we're using their increment, they would agree not to seek abatement or any other mechanism that would affect the amount of taxes they were actually paying to us. So we'd have to have that if we're gonna use the, the actual increment that they're creating. They're fine with that, we've discussed it with them, so that's known. Right now, we're not coming directly forward, but it, you know, at some time here going forward, we hope to approach council about it. We're still working on plans and getting together cost estimates fairly close, though, but of course, I guess we'll give an update as soon as we have one, but that's kind of where we're at now. We're just hoping to get through the creation process here, get through the amendment process on the rec side of it, and get this district sealed away. We're also working on the other district, too, on a tight timeline, just to remind, so we'll, we'll be coming up with that one in the next meeting or so as well.
Okay, thank you.
It's important to get the ordinance passed to coincide with the construction that's gonna create the tax increment, so.
Thanks, John.
Move for the approval of first reading of the ordinance?
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin? What's that? All right, any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamus?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we'll move to our third and final reading of our deer feeding prohibition ordinance. This is a public hearing, so I'll declare it open at this time, any comment on our proposed ordinance?
I have one. I understand there's a friendly amendment to be offered by Councilwoman Boyer that would just make a one-word amendment in this. Having said that...
Connie, can you help?
The one-word amendment was in Section 4, and as I understand it, the initial violation may, Connie, you'd like to have that read "shall," be treated by written warning first.
Yeah, so that anybody gets a written warning. And let me, and I have one more question, between the first and the second sentence. We say it's a simple misdemeanor, but it says it may also be remedied by civil infraction The simple misdemeanor, I guess, would be criminal technically. Is that correct?
Well, it's the least violation you can have in our ordinances, and it can be fined by a minimum, according to the state code, of $50. If we don't couple that with any jail request, which this isn't that kind of ordinance, that is absolutely the least we can do under the state code right now. The infraction side would still be accompanied by the possibility of a civil penalty, which matches off against the misdemeanor criminal, $50 to $750 now. So that doesn't change. But the civil infraction side of it, as far as using that, that gives you what is called alternative remedies also. The magistrate could order that the city is permitted to go onto a person's property, seize the device or the attractant, and remove it from the property, or put an injunction against the individual that is a repeat offender in this regard. And there's a half a dozen different kinds of what we call equitable remedies, injunctive, either mandatory or prohibitive, and the rights to enter and search and seizure rights as far as taking a look, and if you find something, seizing it, that are all alternatives to a criminal process, where you just have a fine or jail time. So the civil side actually has more teeth than the criminal in this situation.
Okay. Well, maybe we should get rid of that sentence. I mean, you know, I don't want to go over the top with this, that's, you know, that's the thing.
That's, I would agree to that being a reasonable amendment, you know, I mean, a mandatory, at least that gives you a chance to not find someone for something, actually have a discussion with them about what may be the aggravation of the situation. Some of these may be aggravated situations, someone not realize that they're throwing the watermelon out is bringing the deer to eat the watermelon.
They're eating out the bird feeder or something like that.
No, we don't want to create any neighborhood wars, deer wars.
I mean, what do people think about taking out the civil infraction citation? I mean, John, do you think that's a reasonable thing?
Well, I tend to look at it just the opposite. If you have somebody that wants to challenge this, and they've been warned, and they've been warned, and they still continue to put an attractant block out or something like that, and they know what the result's going to be, the way to get rid of the attractant block is probably not to fine them $50. They'll go spend $30 on another one, and you'll be back where you started. If you remove it, and they know that you have the ability and the power of the magistrate behind you to continue to remove it, or they continue to do it, I think that'll stop it probably more effectively than fines if they're into it, and the money isn't the object.
John, what if it read, "Initial violation shall be treated by written warning, allowing the violator 24 hours to correct the violation or remove the device or, and/or attractants"? Meaning we...
I think that's Connie's amendment.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, just removing the word "may" and replacing it with "shall."
Take out the commas and the discretion portion of that statement, that's it, basically.
Yeah.
A mandatory warning, basically, yeah. I was going to say warning shot, but that may be inappropriate.
Get to that later.
I'd encourage you not to get rid of the civil infraction citation.
It's the second type of enforcement mechanism you have. It helps the police department or your code enforcement officer occasionally when the ticket by itself doesn't do the job.
Yeah, I agree with keeping the means being fairly flexible with either misdemeanor or civil infraction, but just after that, have that sentence just indicating a mandatory first violation brings a mandatory warning.
Okay, Connie?
I don't know. So, so, I guess the, let me take it back, and the way it reads right now, the police officer, if there was an issue, the police officer, I guess, has a choice whether to even do a written warning at that point. Correct, the way it's written now?
"May," you mean, with the language "may."
Well, if you always say "initial violation shall," you can be confident the police officer is always going to issue a warning. It's a command, "shall" is a command, so that fixes that.
Well, I guess from one standpoint, it's more consistent if we're, you know, it's more consistent. I think it has its issues, too, so I guess I'll amend it that way and see if it gives a second.
So "shall" is, so you're requesting to amend it by removing the civil infraction?
Initial violation shall be treated by written warning, and take out the discretion of the law enforcement, so they don't have to choose.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And it's just consistent.
Okay. Motion by Boyer. So this is a motion to approve the third reading as amended.
Yeah.
Second by Hallie.
So you're approving the amendment first, right?
What's that?
You're approving the amendment.
Approving the amendment. So motion, a second, to amend the Section 4. Please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
No.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
No.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
The motion passes five to two. So as amended, entertain a motion then to pass it from the third to the final reading, third and final reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
No.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next, council, we have our second reading of our rezoning of 800 West Taylor from R2 to R3. And I know that there have, since our last meeting where this second reading was tabled, there were some other meetings with the community. Darren, I think you attended one of those. Can you give us a report on that?
Yeah, I attended a community meeting with several people that I see present here in the gallery tonight, and the discussion was centered on asking that this be referred back to planning and zoning, to begin the process anew, so that notification be sent out, and then also have a better opportunity for the neighbors to be able to come to the Planning and Zoning Board to express their views at that point in time. And I would like the support of the council in order to do that.
I concur with that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, but actually, before I take a call for a second on that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open up the public hearing, so if there is any comment on any of the discussions in the public meetings, or the idea of proceeding with this back to planning and zoning. Anyone? Yes, John?
I'd like to urge the council to go ahead and send it back to planning and zoning. Want to make sure that if we do this process and it's successfully rezoned, that it's done with proper notice, so I concur with that.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
I wasn't at that meeting, Darren, I didn't miss this. I'm Gary Askew, and 1100 South 8th. We live directly east of the Nelson Nursing Home. I would like to mention, and a special thank you for some of them that have done so much research and time spent, it is appreciated by us other homeowners. One of my concerns that I mentioned, I think, at the first meeting, was the, with the low-income housing apartments or whatever lowering the value of our homes. I did visit with three realtors, two of them said, yes, that would probably happen, one of them was neutral, without other research and so forth. I think, as we go through this, we do want to remember, and of course, we're not against low-income people, we don't want to, want you to feel that way at all, but the fact that the, most of people's life savings is in their home, I mean, that's a given fact. And so we each do want to look at how it's affecting us directly. I feel that most of us, if it was a senior apartments or nursing home, would have no problem. And like I say, we feel in a way that we're picking on this group, but I guess we do have to look out for ourselves. And another thing we have a feeling of, and I hope this isn't true, that an awful lot of the minds were, have been made up here already with the city council. Now, I hope this is incorrect. By far, the majority of us oppose this rezoning. I know of one neutral and no one else that is for it, period. And I guess, like I say, I surely hope that if practically all of us have reason to be against this zoning, that your minds are predetermined. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'd just generally speak for the council and say that that's why we have a public hearing process, so that they can gather as much information as possible. We have not polled the council as to how anybody feels. I personally have no idea how any one of the council members feel about this issue at this time, so I would encourage you not to spread that, that people on the council have made up their minds. I don't believe the process works that way. If this, if this comes back from, with a recommendation of planning and zoning, it will go through three hearings again, and we'll all get an opportunity to hear all the information, so I think the council is neutral at this time. Thank you. Anyone else? Now, we'll close the public, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name's Lynn Huxtable, I'm at 1104 South 8th Street. My backyard is adjacent to the former Nelson Nursing Home. I want to reiterate the recommendation that Mr. Hamilton has made to send this back to zoning and planning. There's enough concern on my part and many of the neighbors, we've had a fairly good turnout at a neighborhood meeting, and just with the process that I've experienced us going through, it seems there's been maybe misunderstandings, not enough information offered, and it just seems most appropriate. And Mr. Hamilton seemed to be clearly recommending that we emphasize that it should go back to planning and zoning. So I appreciate the consideration, and hope that you would all make a decision to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Now, we'll close the public hearing, and Darren, you have made that a motion to refer it back to planning and zoning. Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
Second by Hallie. Any others, John?
I do have a question. It wasn't stated clearly. Now, it's my understanding from our last meeting that there was a concern by the neighbors that the, the reason that we're sending it back to planning and zoning, because it wasn't proper notification, I just want to clarify that.
Concern from the neighborhood, that there were people that are adjacent to the property that didn't receive notification for whatever reason, and I don't know what that is, and I haven't investigated into why there wasn't notification given, but I think that that needs to be shorn up, and that this process should begin anew.
I think it's a reasonable thing, but I just want to make it clear, because it wasn't spelled out here in the motion. I believe, Kevin, last time you said that the initial notification was based on distance from the actual building, but not distance from the property line, so including the parking lot and all that. So many of the, many of the, many of the homeowners were not included in the notification because of that, is that, is that the case?
Indeed, there are two pieces of property that concern, not one. So, you know, we're going to go back, and we're going to send out new, you know, new information to everybody, new letters, inviting them to that public meeting and laying that date, we're going to put that in the paper. We're also going to go on Facebook with that, and, I mean, you know, we feel like it's also more appropriate that we put a little more of a hearing into this process, and we'll go back to planning and zoning, where you can really delve into the minutia of what this thing means for the neighborhood, whether that be positive or negatively, you know, perceived by who's looking at it. We need, I think we just need to, we both have been talking about, thought it'd be a great idea just to get a lot more information out there, because misinformation is worse than no information. So that's kind of where we're coming from, and, you know, there's no big rush on this, and I think I applaud John for his willingness, not only to do that, but to have two essentially public meetings at the, one at the location, I think, and one at Sunnybrook, and I was at the one most recently at the location. Very good meeting, I thought, that everybody was, you know, everybody was participating in that meeting, and he was forthcoming, and so have the neighbors been in a very real way, honest and real way. It's, so far, it's been what planning is all about, I think, and so we're going to go back and do a little more of that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll. Actually, we'll just take this as a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I didn't get to say something, just that I attended the meeting at Sunnybrook and the one on site, and I felt that the process started late, how it should have started in the beginning, which was talking to the neighbors. So it's good to slow this down, there's a lot of questions out there, and it's admirable that the developers are willing to slow this down. As Kevin said, there's some misinformation, and getting that cleared up is very important, so we're all talking about the facts, and then moving forward from there. That's all.
Thanks, Michael. Next, council, we have a resolution. Kevin, could you go over that, too? This is decline to exercise jurisdiction over a subdivision.
This is related to our two-mile radius of the city. John, I don't know if you have anything you want to add. I really didn't have any problems doing it, didn't think we had any challenges. I don't know if you want to say anything.
This is southeast of town, it's almost two miles out, we don't have any likelihood of being asked to provide services, and it's very unlikely we would annex or have a real interest in it, so there's no reason to exercise extraterritorial, period.
Okay, thank you, John. So then, council, entertain a motion to decline to exercise jurisdiction, and that would be, again, zoning jurisdiction primarily over this subdivision.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer?
Second.
Second by Hamilton?
Just a discussion here before we just pass this. Because it does strike me that, I mean, at some point, this could be part of the city of Fairfield. Now, you know, if it's just a subdivision, I'm not sure we need to be involved, right, at this point, but I don't know, I mean, I don't think it would hurt for us to be involved, you know, just to say, what if, what if our city does, I mean, we're talking about our bypass, expanding, you know, our limits, you know, of our, you know, our boundaries. I mean, it could grow down to there, and it would be nice to at least consider...
It's a good question, John.
Yeah.
What it amounts to is, right now, we have no water infrastructure anywhere near it, we have no way of providing sewer, the city really doesn't have anything out there that a property owner would come to us about right now. Ten years from now, maybe that'll all be different, but until there's growth out in that area and we see ourselves in that sphere, we're going to continue to have these things sent to us by the county engineer and the board of supervisors after they've preliminarily approved it, to see if there is something like that with us. So we'll always get a bite of the apple, but at this point, there's no reason to bite it.
And I would add to that, John, also, there's not a great risk of something that we can't handle when that point comes, that we do actually annex. It's a, it's kind of a farm development, not like a housing subdivision development or something where there might be some serious challenges making, you know, creating non-conforming uses or anything like that. So we're at that, I think we both would be a little bit more attentive to it, but the gentleman's doing a nice little farm development to have a farm business, I believe, and organic-based, I believe, so it should be an interesting business out there.
Okay, that's fine, then. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, which is the 28th. Okay, council, next item is to set a public hearing for our, for 2012-13 budget amendments, or that would be at our next meeting, and we will set that meeting for Tuesday, the 28th, with Memorial Day falling on the 27th, our Monday meeting, so we'll set the public[1799.51] So, we'll set the public hearing date for May 28th. So, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, council, we have a action item to approve the ballot language for the Jefferson County referendum on the pool and rec center vote. The language that is proposed pretty much mirrors what we had on our ballot for the $3 million bond issue that passed a year ago. So, entertain a motion then to approve the referendum language in support of the county referendum vote.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammus?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammus?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have an action item for the authorization to release a mortgage from the Harper family. John, are you going to address that?
Just going to tell you, I'm pretty old. I know something about this. Back in the, in 1980, the...
You were just a young attorney.
I was just a young attorney. That's back when I was young.
Very young.
The Development Association helped Harper, and the city was a sponsor with a loan back then, when the federal government was involved in it. It went through a bank here locally. The Iowa State Bank was the administrator of the mortgaged arrangement with Harper, and the city was the sponsor, and the mortgage was actually for the benefit of the city. The mortgage, according to Iowa State Bank, which oversaw the mortgage, was paid off sometime in the late 80s. Somehow, and I apologize, I wasn't city attorney at the time, and I don't know what Bob Parkin knew about this either, but at some point, the mortgage after it was paid off was never an issue with anybody. And Harper's been through a number of refinances and so forth. It was never an issue with anybody. But now, they're in the process of selling some of the real estate through their, their bankruptcy reorganization. It is an issue.
So, this came up in a lead search?
And it's never been released. So, we have the core mortgage. It's 33 years old. It's past enforceability, and we should release it. Okay?
Thank you, John. That's very clear. Entertain a motion to...
What we want you to do is authorize the city to sign.
Yeah. Authorization for signing and releasing the Harper Brush mortgage.
I move for authorization to release.
Okay. Moved by Rasmussen?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, council, we'll move down to our committee report. So, ways and means, I know we had a productive meeting last week, a lot of items. John, if you'd like to report on that?
We had a $10 million meeting, actually, and...
I want those every day.
I summarized it briefly in the report that I sent out this morning, and I can go over that, and then I'll ask our city administrator to elaborate. But the first and easiest one was the one that I added to the agenda here. Maybe we just cover that. That was the volunteer center, in order to fulfill their responsibilities for the Blue Zone project, request an additional $4,008 from the city. And the committee was favorite, was sympathetic to that request and suggested that we allocate $2,000 from our, this year's local option sales tax fund and the remainder from next year's. So, that would be a suggestion to the council.
Okay. So, would you make that a recommendation?
That would make a recommendation, a motion to approve.
Then, this would allow, there's probably going to be a public announcement for rag rock, well, brag by, for Blue Zone designations coming out in the latter part of June. And at that point in time, there will be many community initiatives that are going on that will be volunteer-intensive. So, we've asked the volunteer association to, to help us with that. A lot of their funding sources require that they put the time into those designated areas that, that they receive support for. So, they have been helping us, they're willing to do something, but they needed some resources in order to accomplish this, which is where the request came from. So...
That was a motion on my side.
Motion by Revolinsky to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Boyer. Discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Abstain. I'm the board president.
Rasmussen?
The volunteer board.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Yes. And then, we got into the big stuff. First was a presentation by Travis, what's his last name?
Squire.
Squire, sorry. Piper Jaffray on the financing plan for the series of debt in 2013. The first thing was a recommendation to issue $2.5 million of general obligation bonds to finance capital project fund deficits from historic projects, and that totaled $1.8 million. The other $700,000 will lead to shore up our general fund balance. I'm just kind of reading from my notes here. He asserted that this will improve the city's bond rating and overall financial health. And I'll let Kevin explain to it, but the, ultimately, after our discussion, that the committee felt comfortable with this.
Yes, at a certain time, when we, as you all know, since I first came here, we've been discussing our deficits and, you know, what we were going to do about that and a couple of other things. And all that wrapped into a certain point, when I felt like it was most appropriate to call Piper Jaffray and get Travis's help in trying to wind this thing down before the end of this fiscal year. So, we knew exactly where we were at and all ways possible, and knew exactly how we were going to handle it. As you know, we recently looked at our audits, our city audits. We are communicating, are going to be communicating shortly with the city auditor about what we feel that we have found, what we do feel that we know right now for sure. We've got about a couple of, three weeks, maybe two to three weeks more of analysis. We're hoping to make it to our next meeting on finality on what we, what we know we're going to know, in other words. Right now, what we do know for a fact is that our internal deficits would total 1.7 million, not the number that one would be led to assume if you read the audit that we received last week. So, there's a little bit of an issue there. We're going to be talking to the auditor about those numbers shortly, over this next week, and come to an agreement on why that is the case. But basically, that $1.7 million issuance would cover those deficits, all the deficits that we do know that we have. Solving that problem, and the other $700,000, 1.8 roughly, it's a little over 1.7, we would issue up to 1.8 to do that. The other $700,000, making up the total of 2.5, would be funds to shore up our general fund balance. Now, we do feel like that our general fund balance is closer to what we assume it to be and not what our audit would assume it to be. Now, that's a difficult statement to make, and maybe more difficult one to believe, but I believe, we know that it is the case. We've been, went back to 2010 and traced both the bond issuance of that year for streets work that we did, all the way through our processes, as well as other city expenditures that would tell us that is the truth. So, we feel like that our general fund balance is a little more healthy than we would have thought from those pronouncements, and we're going to clear that up, like I said, over the next week or so. But we needed to go ahead and get this bond issuance started, so that we could hopefully finish that before the end of this fiscal year, to make these moves in an expedited fashion, so that when we have the conversation with Moody's going into the issuance of other bonds, that we, of course, are going to shortly hopefully be committing to, that we'll look the best that we can look when that happens, and we'll be able to explain to Moody's what has happened and what we've done about it, and it would apparently be the case, from looking at what we, number one, have in our general fund balance, and number two, where we're heading with some of these other issuances and our planning processes that got us to that point. Basically inspiring confidence with Moody's, as well as, of course, doing the things we've been talking about doing on an internal fiscal level for about the last eight months.
I think this is important, because we've, we've reached a point where some of these deficits that have been carried in individual project balances over the years, for more than a decade, can all be kind of wipe, wiping that slate clean, putting it into a position where we are, you know, we're funding this through one general loan. And, you know, there are a number of ways that you can do this. Over the years, we could have taken it in smaller increments and attached it to other projects that we were doing. Since we've gone through an administration change two years ago, and a change in accounting, and then, or three years ago, rather, and then another administration with Kevin coming on a year ago, we're restoring accounting to the way that we had done in the past. So, these things, these issues come up, and I think it's, it's probably prudent for us to just deal with them at this time in this way, and just to take them completely off the books. So, the, the action you'll take tonight, then, would be to approve the deficit stopgap funding of 2.5 million. And we will, at our next meeting, be visited by Piper Jaffray to actually approve the documents for the borrowing.
And also, to, you know, to get into a little bit more detail about that part of the discussion, but Travis will be here to do that, too.
Before we make that motion, I just wanted to clarify something you just said, Kevin. Are you saying that, since we're still haggling it out with our accountant, our auditor, that in fact, we may not need this amount?
No, we do know we need, yeah, we've come to the conclusion that we do know we need this.
We know we need this amount.
This is, this is us coming forward with a recommendation at the point that we could. We do feel comfortable in this recommendation, certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, that work, that work has been done.
Yeah.
It's just, it, that's a completely different story in terms of how they interpreted where some of those fund balances were and what they, what they were or not. So, that's, that's completely, completely different. That's all been made clear up to this point.
Then, I would make the motion for approving this issuance of 2.5 million general obligation capital notes to finance capital project fund deficits from historic profits, projects, and to shore up the general fund balance.
Moved by Revolinsky?
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any other questions or discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammus?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, John?
The next was a discussion of the timeline for the pool and rec center projects. We, of course, had the voter-approved $3 million. We have a plan to, to have the bond for $3 million that's voter-approved for that project. But in addition, in order to actually come up with the full amount that we need to actually complete the project, we, the proposal is to borrow an additional amount against the pledged donations that are in place or may become in place. So, the amount that was proposed was four to five million dollars. I'm sorry, four to 4.5 million dollars. And we, we did look at the, and I think we should probably discuss it tonight, but we looked at the effect of this on the city's debt limit capacity and our ability to support future TIF projects. But with that, it's sort of a, you know, it's an act of faith. It's sort of, you know, like Travis was saying, well, you know, if you, if you're going to have a basketball game and you, and no one's quite sure they're coming, you say, no, it's happening, everybody just come, and then there's a kind of a faith, everybody's going to be there, and then people come and you can have it. But if you, you say, well, it might not happen, then no one shows up. So, we have to kind of go ahead with that, with that attitude at this point. So, we believe that, we feel comfortable that, to move ahead in this way. So, anyway, Kevin, go ahead.
Yes, this, what we, I'm calling it gap flow. Basically, it's less gap-filling than it is cash-flowing. It's basically, we're using a geo-bond for a general purpose and a cash flow mech, as a cash flow mechanism. The timeline set up by our donations basically is a five-year timeline. The furthest out that we broadcast with those is five years. And that's, as far as I know right now, that, that was one significant entity, for sure. And I, and maybe some others will come on to that as well. So, we were looking at this as, okay, we have to have the, we have the cash flow, because we're, you know, you're, we're going to be actionable, not wait till the end of the line to do something, until we have all the money, we're going to cash flow now. So, looking at the different mechanisms, as you know, we had some, all of you know, we had some discussions about TIF, and, and this is the amendment, we're pulling this into a TIF district as an amendment to put it there. But that's as much about availing ourselves of flexibility and abatement, and making possible different, availing ourselves of flexibility for, for bonding mechanisms, you know, because there's more you can, more that you can do in TIF districts than you might be able to do outside of them in just a normal situation. In this case, it's a geo-referendum, or it's a geo-bonding mechanism with a reverse referendum apparatus attached to it. Now, what that means, basically, is when you generally go out for a, a bond issuance, you will say, we do a referendum, we go forward, shall the city spend $3 million on this project? Was the referendum. And citizens say, yes. So, therefore, they give you the ability to do that. A reverse referendum basically means the city goes out and tells its citizens through the proper channels, such as public meetings like this, citizens, the city intends to take out a 4.5 million general obligation note to cash flow. These donations are going to come in and cash flow this loan, basically, but we are going to do this to cash flow. And citizen, if there's citizens who are interested in, in an opposition, they can gather together and oppose that with a reverse referendum, a referendum mechanism to stop the city from doing so. Now, in our case, of course, there is not, rather than being in an organized opposition to our project, there is great community support for our project. We saw that in our referendum, and I think we feel that, each of us, when we go out into our community and talk to our constituents. But that is what we came to, to be the most reasonable and expedited way for us to cash flow this. This was what you would call a 4.5 million short-term note, because it's got a five-year time limit on it. Now, we, I'm, we're going to be coming forward with a little bit of other, more recommendations related to this project, of course, in the future. We were discussing Logan Apartments, that's not on the agenda tonight, I think that's a later discussion. There's also going to be a recommendation from administration about escrowing certain funds in our own general fund to make sure about, you know, donation return, maybe 10% of total project cost, just to cover the, the other end of this thing, the end of it. But we feel like that, you know, the 4.5 million point is, is, is number one, a reasonable budget for such a project, and number two, about as far for a temporary funding mechanism as the city could go, because if you'll look at the printout that I have put on, in front of all your desks, you can see that the step that the city's taking in doing this maneuver is not a small one. It's legitimate, but it is not small. To do all the things that we're talking about on this list tonight, is you'll notice at the bottom of this sheet...
Show them what they...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's the nice colorful sheet. Get this one in color, just because it actually is, it's nice to look at that way. A very, very appreciable location, it's quite low, as a matter of fact, if you look at the averages around the state, probably the nation. If you go down lower to the second spreadsheet on this piece of paper, debt limit calculation with new debt, you'll go over to the side and you'll see that in issuing the $10 million we're about to finish discussing, that we're recommending the issuance of, it's going to put us for one-year loan at 86.79% of our debt capacity. One year. After that year, the debt drastically falls off. Because of course, if you look at the pro forma of the donations that come in through our donation process here, the first three years are the heaviest weighted. The first years are very big vestments. There's 1.1 million, I think, 1. whatever, they're a little bit over a million a year for the first three years. And then there was about $500,000 on the last two years coming in. So we're heavily vested in the first three years. Ergo, you know, a lot of this $4.5 million issuance will come off in the first three years. Basically, $3 million of it at least. So as you can see, it's a short-term mechanism with a five-year time limit on it, during which, when we get the donations, we will immediately lay them off on the debt, abate the debt with them. And we are going to also, as I said, be proposing that we have some amount of funds in an escrow type mechanism within our own general fund to cover ourselves for some expenditures.
And also, Kevin, this 86% is worst-case scenario.
It is indeed.
So it's possible that it may not be that margin. We certainly hope it's not going to be.
That's actually right.
And any step along the way, we can not, you know, do it.
Yes, there's a lot of stopping points, there's a lot of slowdown points in something like this, right? We have a lot of things we have to issue as far as the bonds themselves, as far as the go-hads for project points themselves. But if you'll notice something very important to this spreadsheet that I had Travis do for us was to give you a scenario that was actually tangible and real. Because you see yourself at $10 million borrow in 2013, if you go down through there, you see $500,000 on 2014, you see a million on 2015, a million-five on '16 and '17, as you go down the years there. Those are debts purportedly we would be issuing to do the things that we do normally. We're a city where if we were in a perfect condition like we're about to set ourselves into, basically, if we went forward every year issuing one to 1.2, 1.5, you know, not going over 1.5 million a year for equipment and streets work and this and that, that's what you call sustainable debt for us. Because if we do that after this point, after this 2014-15 hump point, if we do that, we're going to, our debt capacity is consistently going to go down, you know, as we're being actionable. Why? Because of course, our valuations are going to go up, number one, new growth is going to occur, number two, some growth, some of that growth related to the TIFs that we're actually going to be investing in.
And not that we have any plans to issue that debt during those years. Those are put in there as examples.
Yeah.
Because the concern is that if you are at that high level of capacity, what will your borrowing capacity be? Will there be limitations? And you can see that for those five years, there's still a pretty healthy amount of money that we would be able to borrow within our limit.
Yeah, you want to make, I wanted to make sure and show you guys that we'd be very actionable, even as our, as our capacity was going down quite appreciably during the time that we're being that actionable. We have, none of that has any real intent at this point. But, you know, another key thing is we're being very conservative about the valuation growth in here, about the actual new buildings and growth like that, not to mention the fact that a year, we take off 1.2 million roughly in abatements a year from just what we're doing already. And most governments our size do. You'll pay off about 850 to around a million, two or three a year. So not only will the donations be pulling down, the short-term apparatus we're talking about with the gap flow funding, right, but also our own regularly scheduled debt abatements will be pulling off another million in the same year, the first three years. So as you can see, drastically, we come down in debt that we owe, and our capacity goes up drastically. And overall, another reason that this is a comfort point kind of thing is because as a city, goodness, in 10 years, all of our debt pretty much comes off, right? We're in a very, very helpful, healthy position to go forward issuing debt as a city. Because my goodness, we have really no long-term debt that, except for what we're about to take on with the $3 million pool, which will be a 20-year note. But in 10 years, virtually, all debts. So it's a, that is one reason that I would, I would recommend doing this the way that we're talking about doing it, because the risk for us is reasonably low enough to do it. And because the first year, we're falling off quite quickly. By year three, we've completely almost recovered. Particularly if we don't issue any other debts. We could take another year off of issuing debts, for instance, and not do that, and it would go down from 86 to about 68% in one year. So that's quite, I'd actually run those numbers, so it's quite healthy if we decide to do it, which we could. So that's why I would recommend doing so.
Thank you, Kevin.
One point, just for the public also, the $3 million that the voters approved, that's being paid back by property tax increase. And that's what, everyone understood that going in and voted two-thirds in favor. This other is not being paid back by any increase in property tax. We're paying it back with the pledged donations. That's an important point, I think, for the public, that we're not raising property taxes again. We're not trying to do something under the covers, you know. This is, this is completely different. And we're not going to borrow any more than we have pledged, is what was my understanding.
That is correct. And that's, and one important thing to point out is literally, folks, the city could not borrow more than this, and I could not suggest you doing so as a short-term funding mechanism because it would drive us into the 90% range in our debt capacity, and I cannot propose that we do that. I can propose that we go to the 86 for one year, but I would not even go for one year to 91%.
The one issue here is that at this point, I believe they're not $4 or $4.5 million pledges collected yet, or promised yet, are there? And so that, that becomes a little tricky in that sense. Because if the city, you know, if we, if we go ahead with, say, $4.5 million or four, and...
Well, I would just say, John, I don't know that we're actually approving anything other than the concept tonight.
Yeah, that's true.
We're not, we're not basically, we're not, we're not putting any numbers to this at this point in time, anyway, so I wouldn't.
Yeah, we have time.
It's something to look at closely as we...
We wouldn't execute this until we have that understanding that there is, that those pledges are in place.
Yeah, that's a good point, Ed, and I'd like to read something related to that. Basically, I have also before you on another sheet, it says, all at the top of it, it's basically a copied email. This is a very simple schedule. This is not a big, you know, huge date commitment or anything. It's a very simple schedule, but just to give you an idea about what we're talking about with the flow of this thing, you'll notice it's in an email update, says all at the top of it. The schedule there says, I won't start with the first one, it says, late April, RFP for Architect D. We're already in that architect process, kind of. But late May, the architect is selected for indoor building and Burbuck begins pool engineering. That's another one of the things tonight I'd like to have an approval for. What you're approving tonight, as the mayor's pointing out appropriately, is an up to $4.5 million. We're not, we're agreeing that we're not going to do over that in a short-term mechanism. But late May, the architects is selected for indoor building and Burbuck begins pool engineering. So basically, we would do that right after this meeting, if we approve that. Late June, beginning of July, city audit and year-end activities are occurring. The architect delivers marketing materials for the push towards the county referendum. That means basically, our architect that we're about to hire is going to generate some good information we can use, the committee, I should say, will be able to use to market their referendum, such as we did for our own. And site work would begin on pool, pool bids are let. And what that means basically is if we do decide tonight that our timeline is a 2014 timeline, which is something we'll talk about in a second, then we would be probably, you know, destructing the old pool. I'm sorry, am I taking too...
No, no, it's fine.
We would destruct the old pool, and we would be doing a little bit of stormwater work down there, getting ready for our developer to come in. Late August, early September, the pool construction is underway, and architect's work continues on indoor gym. By December, January, you're seeing the indoor gym bids go out. But by May 2014, spring of 2014, the gym construction would be beginning. By August 2014, the pool would be opening. By the winter 2014, maybe in the fall, the gym would be opening. The commitment to that timeline is a commitment to this short-term bonding mechanism, because that's what it's for, is to create, you know, basically, a bonding mechanism that fits the timeline for the construction purposes. And another one of the recommendations, of course, was related to the committee, going to the committee and requesting funding of approximately $850,000. I'm sort of hitting three of these elements, but basically, some things have occurred. The property that was going to be, the property purchase of about $210,000 was going to be included in that request of 850, maybe kind of something that doesn't need to be included there. And discussing with the committee today about timelines of donations, I think what I'm actually going to do, request from the committee, I believe, and they're going to be speaking a little bit here in a second about where they're at, but I'd be probably more asking them for a pro forma of their donations. What I got before was a yearly, 2013, 14, 15, kind of like that, telling us what we're going to be expecting from donations a year. And we use that to build our ideas of the bonding and how that the bonding payoff would work. But what I think I need now is basically monthly. Because if we can break it down by the month, we can be a little bit more exact about what we know about when we're going to go out with that bond issuance. The timeline that is a 2014 pool opening timeline, opening roughly in July, August, I don't want, I want to, you know, lower the expectations here and say August, but the pool in 2014. If we stick to that timeline, then we'd be telling Burbuck to head off tomorrow. Now, today, we found out another piece of information that's pretty important, that is that Burbuck's willing to hold off on getting paid for some of their engineering.
Let me just stop you there, Kevin, because I think a lot of this information is really relative to the next action item.
I was kind of, yeah, throwing them all together.
So why don't we, this, the funding recommendation is not, we're not going to be executing a particular amount tonight. That could be flexible.
Yeah.
It could be, that would be a limit. It could support the timeline that you're describing, or it could, it could support a later timeline.
It could.
Because we're not actually executing it. So I would just entertain action on the, that request first.
So the motion will be to...
Move ahead with up to $4.5 million.
Up to.
Yeah.
Move ahead with up to issuance of...
And this would be a recommendation, John, and I think that's the language that I would use in making a motion, because we're not actually, we're not actually setting a limit or taking any official financial action this evening. I think just, you're just giving the council's approval and are giving a recommendation to pursue this as all of these different elements come together.
So, well, well, I mean, yes and no, but I mean, we can't, we know we can't go over a 4.5.
That's fine. A 4.5 can be part of the, you know, can be part of the motion.
Up to $4.5 million.
But this is a recommendation. We are not approving $4.5 million.
We're solving to recommend...
We're essentially making a recommendation for this financial mechanism to be pursued. And then we'll have another action that will come up once we, you know, once we decide how we're going to execute that and at what time.
So I would make that motion to recommend that this financial mechanism be pursued for up to $4.5 million in general obligation bonds to basically...
Cash flow.
Cash flow, that's the word. The pool and rec center project, based on pledged donations. Backed by pledged donations.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion by Revolinsky, second by Hally. Any other discussion? Does everybody get that? I know we had a two-hour meeting discussing a lot of this, ways and means.
I know, I was kind of blew through that, my bad.
We're not, I'm going to make sure there aren't any questions. And now, we'll go ahead and please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Fletcher Kaling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
So can I tackle the 850 now? Be better?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. The reason for the 850, which we did okay, a request of up to 850,000, was there's about $210,000 for the cost of the property, of course, that we've been looking at, the Whitney property, as we call it. And also for, basically, in common terminology these days, to get both these projects shovel-ready. Meaning, our goal for the year, regardless of anything, if we weren't even going to take action this year, we'd still have the goal of getting both these things shovel-ready so we were ready to take action next year. In other words, ready to go out in the spring, bid, take bids, and do it. So I guess, one thing that's changed is the property, I think, is maybe not a question we should consider in that, I think, taking that off the table. And Burbuck today said, basically, they could wait six months for payment for their part in the engineering for the pool. Now, they do want payment directly at that six months in cash, but if you...
And we estimate that to be how much?
About $250,000, $300,000, somewhere in that range there, depending on how many hours and all that stuff. But, you know, roughly a quarter million dollars. And that's going to take them three to four months to create, he's willing to wait six to get paid for it. But that takes us May, June, July, August, September, October, all the way into, pretty much, looks like October. Now, if tonight, we stick to the timeline I read you just a moment ago, which is, we'll just call that Plan A, that Plan A is an actionable plan. It says right now, what we're committing to is doing both these projects as you lay them out in this plan. We're going to go out right now, you're going to call Burbuck in the morning, he's going to start designing on this pool. He's going to do that for three to four months, he's going to be finished, two months after that point, we'll have to pay him. We are going to wait for the August referendum, we're going to see what happens in that. We're also going to be choosing architects and moving ahead in architectural design work and stuff like that, to be bringing forth recommendations to council on that side of the project. We're also going to be looking at this bond mechanism and getting all that worked out on a timeline, how we're going to do that issuance. And, you know, that is what you would call a timeline that has the pool opening in 2014. And one decision, I think, above all, that we need to come out of here with is, yes, that's our timeline, or no, it isn't. To boil that down, in other words, I'd like some direction for council. How does council feel? Are we opening the pool in 2014, or is our goal to open the pool in 2015?
Okay. Well, we need some background on that decision, first of all, because the discussion with our private partners, and this is a public-private partnership, and it's something that we really value, the work that they are doing and that they've been doing from the very beginning, in terms of making the recommendation, getting us into the early design phases, and then this very important fundraising and all the work that they did for the city referendum and now for the county referendum. The issue there is that many of the, several of the large donors have requested that their donation be contingent upon both projects being able to be funded and to be developed simultaneously. So our proposal here from Kevin is a little more aggressive in terms of the timeline, but not by much, just a couple of months, we think. So the request, then, to the people who are really managing the private donation side of it, is to utilize some funds for the engineering for the pool prior to the county vote, which would obviously give that much more confidence and assurance to the, to the project. And could those dollars be spent with the blessings of some of those folks that have already made commitments to the projects? And would we be able to do that? If not, I know that what came out of the meeting today is that the preference would be to wait until August 7th, the day after that vote, when there is more certainty or uncertainty in the project, and then begin the design process. The word from our, from Burbuck, our designer, was essentially that if that was the case, the pool would not open in 2014, would open in May of 2015. So that's the discussion we wanted to have tonight with council, so they were up to speed. And Tom, if you'd like to add anything, you're welcome to come up to the podium and do so.
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity to chat with you. I find it interesting that one of your actions today was providing new bonds to cover old deficits created by capital projects not funded. Thought that was pretty interesting. 1.8 million. Where are we at today? You know, I think the task force is, you know, as Kevin's describing, is working really hard and trying to come up with a better, more finite plan for the gymnasium. We've got, we've gone through the process on, with Burbuck, getting a design, getting all the features approved, and better cost estimates. We've not done that with the gymnasium yet. And until we hire the architects, that isn't going to happen. But it's a piece of work that we think can get done within Kevin's timeline that he's saying. And I think at that point, we're definitely going to need to, as soon as we hire the architect, we probably are going to need to ask to spend money. And it's not, it's not you asking us, it's us asking you to spend some money. To get us to the point where we know what a real cost is. When we started the project, we said, this thing was about a $10 million project. At that point, we'd had soft numbers from Burbuck, soft numbers from another architect. And we believe, once we've hired Carl Nelson, which, you know, we think's great, they're telling us, we think we can get it done for less. And I said, great, tell me the number. And their answer is, well, we think we can get it done for less, but we've got to get our architect onboard and go through the process that we did for the pool. The timeline gets us there by July 1st-ish. First week in July, we'll have better estimates. So we'll know the real cost going into it. We think we'll have a much better opportunity to talk to our county residents and help push that vote. At the low end of the range, it's about, I hate to say it publicly, because I don't want to be held to, so actually, I won't even say it publicly. But today, we've raised, as of this afternoon, 3.4 million in private donations, 3.445. 3 million from the city gets us, you know, six and a quarter, you know. So we're definitely short. We need this county vote to move forward. So we've had a lot of discussion about this timing issue and what makes sense. And, you know, we are not the city council, right? We feel pressure to get this thing open as soon as we can, because obviously, we're out in the community and people are talking to us. But we also think it has to be done, done right. And so we've had some debate, really, debate is probably the right word, about should we target an opening in August of 2014, or should we target an opening in 2015, in May? The task force itself has not met as a group. So to come to a decision on that, so I can just tell you, we're having this debate and the quality of whether we should do that or not. I did share, as a personal aside, a personal aside, this is not the committee, I really believe this project is going to happen. It's going to happen. We are going to get this community project done. Timing is an issue. What it's ultimately going to look like is an issue. If we said we went with the numbers we have today, and God forbid, we don't get the county get the county vote, and we're gonna work hard to get it, we're going to work hard to get it, and I think we will, but if we don't, we're drastically gonna have to change what our vision of those facilities is gonna look like. So I'm concerned that the city would tomorrow start spending design money on a pool that we may not build. We're gonna know August 7th. We're gonna know August 7th. But if we start down this path of spending the money on a design of a pool, as it's currently thought of, and we can't afford it, I, I'm very concerned, as a citizen, that's money down the drain. So I'm gonna let that go. Just to talk about this fundraising part of it, there, the mayor's correct, I mean, where there are some restrictions on some of these donations, and most of the restrictions relate to building the facilities as described in our public meetings back in October of 2012. And that if we make substantial change, which, John, you know what that means? I'm not sure I know. So, we, we have to do the right thing and say, "Okay, here's what our new plan looks like. Donors, will you still participate?" So, I have some concerns there. Again, I think we can get there.
So just to clarify, Tom, that would be a change from, for instance, a smaller pool or a smaller gymnasium?
Correct. Yep, yep. And of our 3,445,000, 71% of the pledges have that restriction. 71%. So, now, it's a small group of people, I happen to be one of them. So, our goal, as we talked, is, if we get to that point, we'll obviously reach out to them early, and say, "This is what we're seeing, can we still count on you?" I mean, it's a, it's a big number, it's, we need to have it, so. So that's where we're at today, I think.
So, Tom, you, so you're, you don't have a recommendation from your full task force?
We don't, and I apologize.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine, I know this, this all really just came up in the last, there, two.
Yep. So, I think in the immediate future, and, and maybe before your next city council meeting, we're gonna need to engage an architect, and current estimate is, we'll spend about 83,000 to 85,000 dollars, getting us to the same point that we are with the pool, in terms of, here's what it's gonna look like, here's the features, here's, we don't have final costs, just like we don't on the pool, but we have a much better idea of what it's going to cost, and now we can go to the voters and say, "We think the total project is now X."
I guess, since, since it is on the agenda, and, you know, we, we probably would wanna go in the direction of taking action on it.
Yep.
If the council decides tonight to go forward with the earlier plan, are you willing to embrace that and go to your donors and ask for their support in that? And I think, you know, we've gotten down to 400,000 dollars that, that would be needed for that, we don't even know over what timeframe, that may be over a 90-day timeframe, so hopefully it would be more manageable, and it may be actually less than that. But I, I've, just, just a hypothetical at this point, is that something that...
You know, the city council asked me a year ago.
We don't wanna lose you, so we don't wanna insult you, we just wanna...
I love this project, I think it's great. And, but my comment is, you asked me to develop a plan and raise the money for this project. I said I'd do it. I have tons of help, that they're working way harder than I am. The answer is, you know, if you tell us that's your direction, that's, that's the direction I, I'm gonna say we're going. You're the ones in front of the public. I think if that's the direction you take tonight, we need to pull that group of 10 donors together immediately, and talk about what it really means. Because, we, first off, we don't have, of the pledges, today, we have 261,000 dollars in our checking account. So, so we don't have enough to even fund that. And it's likely the only place we're gonna get the money.
Right.
Is from that group of 10, who said, "You got, you've gotta get to this point before we're gonna release funds." So, we're gonna need to ask them.
Okay. That's fine, but I also, we go to ask them, there are two things that I really wanna be really clear on, and I don't think we're clear on them yet.
Okay.
How much is it that we're exactly going to need if we commit to this? You know, we're, you know, from the, from the design standpoint, I know there's, I know there's an answer to that, Jane.
Yep.
And I, I wouldn't wanna ask for anything more than, than we have to commit to. And then the second thing is, that if we go to these folks, I want them to know specifically what the downside is, because the downside is really a small number also, in terms of the engineering dollars that you would spend, that may go down the drain if you have to change everything. So it's really, it's a small number, I, I just, I just wanna be clear on that, I don't want it to be too melodramatic, because it's...
Yeah, I don't know that number, but...
Well, it's partial, it's part of what Burbach's fee would be. In other words, how much engineering are they going to do in 90-day, or, you know, less than 90 days? And, you know, what would we have to scrap and then start over again? Because it would be, that, that's what we're risk, I think that's ultimately what we're risking. But, Jane, you have some information on the...
You know, I, not knowing that I was gonna be asked to exactly have some numbers here, but, if I'm just going guesstimates, guys, this isn't, you know, specific, but, one of the line items from the Burbach, this was one of their probable costs that we got last summer, okay? One of their line items is the design fees, permits, soil borings, site surveying, as Kevin would call this, being shovel-ready. That's about 285,000 dollars. Now, whether they...
Whether they get that all accomplished in a 90-day period, it may be less, yeah.
Now, you're talking Burbach there.
Right.
Are you also the...
I am also talking the other, you know, the...
The gym.
Carly Nelson and...
So, what we're doing, the...
And anyone that we will hire between now and August 6th.
Right. So, what we're doing as the finance, or the facilities committee, is, this Wednesday and Thursday evening, we're interviewing three architects. So we have SVPA, Structure, and Newman Munson are coming in for interviews. And those interviews are run with Carl A. Nelson, who's helping us run those interviews. They were asked specifically in their, when we put out the request for qualification, the RFQ, and got those, that information back, Carly Nelson had asked them specifically to kind of break out their dollars for what's called a schematic drawing and a master plan, which is what we would want to have before the vote, for the county vote. So, it would be a drawing, a schematic drawing, but also a master plan of the entire layout of the, where the current Roosevelt's and Roosevelt Center is, okay? So you can look at it that. Those dollar amounts from those three companies ranged anywhere from, I'll say what the number is, but then I'm gonna have to give you a qualification, because it, one, doesn't mean that one was cheaper overall. It just meant that they were only gonna charge a smaller amount for that particular phase, but then their prices go back up and they're all about the same. So, with that being said, we range anywhere from 9,000 dollars, which was really low, to 80,000 dollars, just to get to the schematic drawing, okay? And that's gonna take us till August, you know, or in, actually, in, in July. So, those would be fees that we would have to incur, you know, if you go the high end, that's 80. The mid-range, there was one of the, one of them was at a 46.
So 80,000 dollars, and if we use the, if we use Burbach's deferring of their fees, then, between now and then, that's, is that all we're going to need?
I...
No, I think that you would also have to have, don't we also have to have attorney's fees? And, and Carly Nelson's fees.
Mm-hmm, right.
As a project manager. And theirs is about a 1% over the overall fees, so maybe that's like 50,000.
Okay. Kevin, go ahead.
All in all, we have fees that'll be coming from Marcia Coria, and helping us organize the paperwork. We'll have fees from Carly Nelson, as mentioned, we'll have some other attorney's fees, we'll also have fees from certain contractors who are performing work, including the destruction of the pool, as well as some site work up on the indoor facility. Basically, I think what's important is, number one, tonight, we may, we're at the point where we've been crawling along in a lot of different directions, but as we did the other night in our three-hour marathon, we are at the point where commitment is necessary about something, and that thing is a timeline. Are we going to open the pool? As, as the assumption that I made off the beginning when I first came about the, our projects, our rec projects, on that timeline was, 2014 pool opening was an important thing. That's kind of the direction I was getting, from everybody. Now, we need to decide that now. Is, is opening the pool in 2014 important, or is it not? Is that our timeline for the pool part of this project, or isn't it? Because where I kinda go from here, and how much money I think I'm gonna need by whatever date, the big thing with the committee, I think that I, that is important, is we back up a step and say, rather than us providing a lot of information to the committee, because it's a city project, city's gonna run this project, I need to go to the committee, and getting a, a request, or getting the okay tonight to say, "This year, can I have 850,000 this year, is up to that," is, is fine. But you know what needs to happen, is I need to go to the committee and say, "What's the committee's pro forma? By the month?" Basically, or, you know, we broke it down yearly before, let's break it down, when can we get what monies by when during the years, all the way out through the, so I can give that to Travis, and we can kind of look at it a little more tightly, depending on what decisions we make down the road. But for right now, I think we can hold off and say, "We know we need this, we know we need that, well, it's okay, and up to number throughout this year." Because the pro forma for the committee that they gave me on a yearly basis did say 1.1 million in 2013, so that's by December 31st, and we know we have that date. But I can go back to the committee and work on getting a monthly pro forma on their level. But our level, we're at the rubber-meets-the-road position here. We have to make some dedication to certain things. Number one is, is the pool gonna be opened and swimmable in 2014 or 15?
Kevin, I think my opinion is, we need to go forward in a more prudent manner, and we shouldn't push to 2014. It seems to me like, this county referendum has to happen first. I think that's the wise thing to do, so that, you know, we're already pushing the limit about raising the funds for this project. We don't wanna waste even 25, 50,000, 100,000 on design if it changes. We, we, we don't have that cushion.
You're, the pool cannot change, folks. The pool is at the smallest amount of feet for a city our size that we can get. We're at the 8,500 square foot level of the pool. If it gets smaller, it's not big enough for future growth, not even for the present situation of the, and, and the big thing is, I agree about the prudent, prudent manner, we are going forward in a prudent manner. We gotta have this engineering for this pool regardless. If we make a decision tonight to not have me clobber back tomorrow and say, "Go ahead with the engineering," we have made a decision to not have this pool open in 2014. Because if we don't do that tomorrow morning, it ain't gonna happen.
If it's gonna be open for two weeks, or whatever, it's not, it's not that big of a deal, I don't think.
Well, opening, the, the pool has to be ironically termed, has to have a dry run. We gotta know what leaks, what doesn't, what works, and what doesn't.
Sure.
And as I said the other night in the committee meeting, I would hate to, in the middle of August, in 100-degree heat, be outside, opening a pool and running it, and lifeguard swimming in it with 100 kids on the outside of it, looking in here like, "Yeah." Because they're not swimming in that pool, and they're capable of doing that. All we're talking about is really, basically, a grand opening in a dry run, but nothing extraordinary. And we may not even make that if it rains, we might just have to dry-run it and not have anybody in it, because it's too cold, it's September. We're, that's not really our greatest concern. The concern is, if we, if we do not say, "2014's a timeline tonight," then, de facto, we're not, 2014 isn't the timeline, because I would have to clobber back before the end of May to make that happen.
Okay, so let's...
Then from my perspective, 2014 isn't the timeline. I guess that's what I'm saying.
So we'll just, we'll, we'll center our discussion around that. So, your request then, Kevin, for 850 or 640, if the, the land is taken care of, is, is something that you, you view as a seven-month request over the next...
It's not necessarily immediately actionable or anything, depending on what we do tonight about this timeline, we could be holding off quite severely on that, you know, another year.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open up for council discussion then, as far as the two proposals. Proposal for beginning the engineering on the pool.
I guess I feel that. I think the engineering aspect is really, really important. I mean, I think, first of all, I think, for continued community support and involvement and money to come in, I think it would be, will be a real asset, for them to actually see what's going to be done, and what we're going to accomplish. I mean, you know, I mean, I think that the committee has worked so hard to, you know, do fundraising, and our commitment has been, you know, the 3 million, but I think, I think it's kind of like, there's this big, broad sky, and I think the sooner that it can get narrowed down, and some really firm things about, "This is what we're going to be doing, this is what we're going to be, you know, this is what the city's going to have, and this is the reason we need your commitment to help us get this project completed." I think it's gonna make it much, much easier to finish, rather than, I'm, a little bit like Connie, I think 2014 is important, but yet I think, to get this, the engineering aspect done, so we know dollar-wise where we are in things, it's kind of like otherwise pipe-draining. I mean, you know, we'd all like to build great, great, big houses, but then suddenly, when the architect comes back and says, "Now, if this is what you want, this is how much it's gonna cost," which we may not be able to afford, and I think it's gonna be very, very beneficial if we get this, you know, engineering aspect nailed down.
I have a quick question for Tom. So, your concern was that we may not raise all the funds for this, and so, what you were expressing, just so I understand, is that you didn't think we should go ahead with the engineering, or the items for the rec center, with the architect, et cetera, because, and spend that money if we had to redesign it later on?
I think, what we should be doing is spending money to get the gymnasium to the same stage we're at with the pool. I didn't personally think that we should need to spend more money on the pool until we know we're doing the whole project.
To get the entire project completed.
Yep.
Right. So you, you agree that, so you're proposing that this, whatever, 80,000 plus the 50 for Carly and all that, that we go ahead with that now, maybe from the funds you already have set aside in the foundation, and that, and then we wait on the Burbach until, that's your proposal, I mean, that's your suggestion?
That, please understand, that is Tom McMahon's suggestion.
Yes, I, we have to give that...
Kevin doesn't like that one, I know. No, because we have to give that... Kevin's got three little kids who are dying to go to the school, and I think that's really part of this here. But I appreciate that perspective as well. He, he's gonna, the committee will let us, if we get a pro forma, monthly pro forma from the committee, they're gonna tell us when their money comes in. So we'll know that ahead of time going in, so we can make our decisions on a better level. They don't need to know when we're gonna jump, we need to know when they're gonna jump, because they're the financing, we're the action arm part of it. So we can wait, if they're from, if we know their financing isn't coming in, when we need, we can wait accordingly.
The other, the other issue I wanna bring up too, is that, Tom, now, you, you painted the worst-case scenario in terms of, if the vote doesn't pass, and we have to go back into a redesign. We may not. I mean, what, what it means is, we, we have another million to raise privately also, that may take longer, and I think we've, we've discussed this point before too. If you went ahead right away with the pool design, we can also put the brakes on that at any time as well, for elements that aren't, that haven't come up yet. We're still all, as a community, committing to both projects, the way that, that we envision them now, it's just we're saying that it's gonna take longer, because we need a little bit more time to, to raise the funds. So it's not necessarily a redesign if, if a county vote fails, I don't wanna get that message out there either.
No, we just need to, well, I mean, it, we, we obviously, we're at, we're at 6.4 million today, right? That's where we're at today. And if, if the, the gymnasium is close to our current estimates, that leaves us a couple million short. And now I, now we need to, you know, we've, we've raised 3.4, and we've gotta get a couple more million. I've got some pledge cards here right now, if you wanna fill them out. It's, and, and then, I think the issue becomes, you know, we talked to Burbach today about timing, if we started tomorrow, if, if we said, "Yes, go tomorrow," and I said, I asked if there was a way we could get open in July, and he said, "No." We're saying, "Early..." We're saying early August, and I said, is that August 1st? No, it's early August, if all things go well. So I understand the concern of doing a dry run, I, I get that. Um, the timetable they laid out for us, if we gave them a go-date on August 7th, is that we do the dry run in early May.
Of 2015.
Of 2015, right? We missed, we missed the two, two or three weeks that it might be open. So, and, you know, we've talked about it a lot, I'm...
Yeah, I just want to clarify for everyone here, you know, what, what the issue is too, because yes, it could go that direction, but it could mean that we're more time. I was the first one to say, as you know, that these are 50-year projects and we should do them when the time is right, and, you know, but at the same time, we're the, we're that kind of progressive community where we want to get things done as quickly as possible. We have great confidence in our ability to get these projects done. Um, so anyway, let's, let's have, I think you, you know, you're, Kevin is making his case very strongly to continue, uh, on the, on the timeline that we're on right now. Your committee that is responsible for raising funds, funds privately and commitments to private individuals about doing this responsibly, responsibly to their wishes, is asking you to slow down a little bit. What would you like to do?
Well, again, I, I think, um, we should be spending the money to get the gym where the pool is, so that they have the most information ready for the bond issue and, um, things, and as soon as that's passed, which I think it will, then we go, you know, full steam ahead after that.
Um, won't we still need to have money available to finance getting those plans or that schematic to the point? Okay? Isn't that kind of what we're asking here in part? I mean, we know we do have an architect for the pool, we're unsure of who the architect will be for, for doing schematics and doing the ultimate design for the gym facility, okay? The, I don't see the two projects as being mutually exclusive of one another. I see them being as, as one entity, okay? And understanding the process of construction, that pool construction is an outdoor activity, and you can, you really can't do anything with that in the wintertime. Uh, there's, there's limited things that you could do, but major construction points can't be done unless the sun's shining and the weather is nice. Um, with the, with the gym facility, you're gonna see a building that gets closed in real quick, but then it won't be open for quite a while, okay? But there's, there's an awful lot of work that goes into that as well. In all actuality, I myself personally don't believe that we'll have a pool that you can go and jump into in August. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I, I understand how the weather can be just, wreak havoc with construction projects in Iowa that only go on in the summer, okay? So to say that, that we have to move ahead with a timeline that we get the pool open and we have its dry run in August is, is leaving out the whole side of the story that says, we're also going to be moving ahead with the project on the gymnasium. And to say that you cannot move ahead on either one until you have a, a design that is, is up to the same standard level that we're at with the pool at this point in time, I think is, is being unprudent with what we're trying to do and the time that we're trying to accomplish it. I think that if we can access some of that funding in order to be able to get the architect hired, get the schematic done, get it out in front of the voters of the county, have them come onboard with us in August to make this a county-wide type project, rather than just the city, I think we're still gonna need to be able to have a little bit of access to some of the donor money. And I, I, myself, I feel comfortable in asking you, the committee, to be able to help us to come to that conclusion. If you have any points back to that, I, I, this is kind of my view...
I think they've stated that they're willing to release those funds.
Yes.
Well, and I think that's, excuse me, Darren, I'm, I don't know if I wasn't clear enough, but I am talking about money being spent on the gym to get, you know, right now, so that we get a positive vote in August, and, but kind of holding up, um, 'cause they don't have the funds to spend right now, and I don't really want to go to bonding right now, um, until we know what we're really building.
Yeah, but there's so many other aspects of engineering that need to take place prior to knowing what they're asking for.
So are you suggesting that move, to move forward in Kevin's timeline?
I think there, I think there is money that is going to be asked of us to, to be able to do site preparation in both locations, um, prior to any of the architectural work being...
Are you asking to do Kevin's timeline then, if that's my question? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I'm asking that we stick with Kevin's timeline.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's what I need to do.
I am being, I am being realistic in stating though, that I don't feel that the pool will be ready to be opened for a dry run in August. That both facilities, by all practical purposes, I believe the gym will actually be open and available to the public before the pool facility will be, okay? I, I have no doubt in my mind that that will be the case, because if you, if you frame in the building, you get everything done in the inside of it through wintertime, summertime, and then wintertime once again, by basketball season in the winter of, of 14, you're gonna be looking at, uh, having a, a gym facility, you know? The, the pool is gonna be open in 15, we know that to be sure. If we started tomorrow, I'm sure it would be open in the spring of 2015. But there's just so much that has to be done prior to, in order to get those accomplished by that date.
And realize that. Um, so I, uh...
Jane, if you're gonna speak, can you come to the microphone, because we, for our home viewers?
So then my question back to you is, are you looking at purchasing land for the gym now? And I'm asking this for the facilities committee, so that when I go back to them, I know it's on our plate, you know, for what we need to be doing in the next couple of months.
Well, I have no knowledge of what any discussion has been about property purchase that's underway right now.
We do feel like that we'll get a, we do feel pretty confident in us getting an extension till after the referendum.
Getting an extension on the option till after the election.
Okay, so you're not gonna do any kind of site work there?
But we won't be purchasing...
Are you talking about trying to do then, site work at where the pool is located?
I think we may be doing that here in the summer, yeah, uh, late spring and early summer, we may be removing the old pool and doing a little bit of stormwater work. I've still gotta check with some folks about that, we have been...
She's asking about the gymnasium land, she's asking about...
The gymnasium.
Well, I, I moved back to the pool.
So we'll be doing something down there at the pool, and we've also been doing site work at the pool. The site for, plan for the pool is pretty darn near finished.
That's what you're speaking of, those additional dollars? Because we were looking at dollars for the architect, but you might be also suggesting dollars for, um, the site at OB Nelson?
Well...
That's what they're asking for, is money that you guys don't have yet in hand.
No, let's, let's, let's clarify here for just a second, okay?
No.
The important thing is this is not a death march, guys. I mean, if we agree tonight that we're gonna go forward in this policy, this process here, there's a million different points where we can say, we're ready to stop for a minute, right? We get all the documents back, we're ready to go bid. Well, no, I'm not, I think I'll yawn and sit down for a day or two, or maybe 10 weeks, or maybe two months, right? We could do that at that point. We don't have to go out and bid when we get ready to. The objective in a government project is to get ready to as quick as you can after you've made a decision, that that's something you might be gonna do. You gotta get ready as quick as you can to avail yourself of the many opportunities that may arise, because good luck is a combination of preparedness and happenstance. We want to get lucky, so we need to get prepared to be lucky. And we haven't even talked about grants. If we don't get the county money, there's grants we haven't even talked about, there's other means that we actually have, we haven't even talked about. The important thing tonight is to make A to C, we can't keep saying, when we get the donations, we'll build the building. We'll build the building when we get the donation. The two of us are gonna square off all night long. The thing we need to say is, let's get a dependable pro forma from the volunteer organization that's getting up the money, because they know when they're gonna get it, so let's get a dependable timeline of when that money comes in. Let's commit to a process that has us getting ready with monies we know, regardless of anything, we have to spend, because we already have the pool basically designed. We showed the public a picture of a pool we intended to build, they voted on it. That's the design we need. The indoor building, we need three gym floors and a raised walking track. That's really the only commitment, it seems like, that anybody, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the only distinction, we needed three gym floors and a walking, suspended walking track. And that, we're on core to, we're all into that. So, we just need to get shovel-ready on these projects, whether or not we want to be actionable, but if everybody tells me tonight, I want that commitment of whether or not we want this pool thing to happen by 2014, because if not, I can relax a whole lot, because I'm having to get a whole lot of things in a hurry ready otherwise.
Kevin, I just wanted, I just want to frame this in a different way one more time, and that is that, this from the very beginning has been a public-private partnership, and we respect what the public side is doing as well, which is why we're having a discussion. I don't want anyone to feel like we're ram-rotting a decision, uh, you know, based on, you know, based on, on what I think are responsible positions that you are taking, because also the preparedness and the shovel-ready also gets us in a position economically to take advantage of early construction cycles, better pricing on construction materials, all those things. The committee has discussed some of that. There, there are pluses, there are pluses and minuses in that arena as well, but we just, I, I think, you know, we, we still want to be sure that our partners are comfortable with what it is that we're asking them to do in terms of this timeline as well. Um, so, I think the council's heard both sides and has probably heard enough, and I think you're, you're kind of pushing for a decision on whether we're going to go forward with a recommendation of Burbak to go ahead with engineering.
I am, but I, I want to reiterate that the committee's ability to give us funds is not what delineates whether or not we make this decision. We have our own capabilities after July 1st here, when we, and plus Burbak today said you have six months. We were already on our, in the anytime line, if we were talking about doing this, using our own funds, in issuing these bonds in July and coming into September with them, so...
I think that's fine, but you're, on the agenda, you have a request of $800,000 from the committee, so...
No, I mean, we still need the...
That's what we're talking about.
We still need the ability to request from the committee, and that would, becoming in the form of basically a pro forma from them of letting us know when the money is coming, because right now, we don't know enough about when their monies are coming.
I think the real question is, are you gonna call Burbak tomorrow and tell them to go ahead or not?
If the council tells me 2014 is that date, then yes. If, if not, then no.
I, I kind of agree with Darren, that, in the fact that, that, and even, we said this in the committee meeting, you know, maybe it'll be open in mid-August, maybe not, you know, depending on the weather, maybe we'll have a pool party, you know, in August, and then we'll be closed until spring. And so personally, I don't think it's that big a deal, even for a couple of weeks to have the pool open. Um, and I, so I, I guess I'm, I'm leaning more towards Connie that, uh, to not call Burbak tomorrow. Let's continue with, let's, let's go ahead and, and spend the money to, to bring up the, the rec center up to the, uh, level that we need to have, that we, that we know, you know, that these, you know, hire the architect and all that, spend those initial funds. I don't think we gain that much by, uh, by doing it now versus waiting until August. You know, we, we, we gain the possibility of a pool party or not, or, you know, a couple of weeks. And so, um, I think, uh, also since there's, also, by hesitating, what I'm saying to the county is, we want you in on this. We're not gonna just, we, you know, it, it, to me, it, it says that, you know, we're, let's wait till you guys get in on it, you know, we, it's not, you know...
I think it works both ways. I think if you create the urgency by having your, all the plans ready and done and telling we're moving forward and we're anticipating you being there, that's a part of it too. I'm gonna entertain a motion either to move forward with a, um, with a, I'm not gonna call it a 2014 pool date, because I don't think that, that we're really getting into trouble with, uh, you know, with keeping on the, uh, the schedule that Kevin has proposed, so...
I have one more question for Kevin. How does, um, CA Nelson feel about this timeline?
Well, CA Nelson is a lot like me, they really don't care one way or the other, they just want some definition to know actually when, what's going, so they need to start doing the same thing I'm starting to do right now, which is model around, modeling when monies are gonna go out, what's gonna happen as a result of that, to going towards our budget in the fall, we need to know a lot of that as well. This, this point needs to be decided pretty quickly, we're getting into future planning, we're about to turn to fiscal year, so...
One last question, brief answer please. Um, what percentage of the amount we're gonna spend on Burbak under this plan, if we move forward, would you say needs to be done regardless of what the end, end result pool we have? Is it like 80%? I mean, we're, site demolition, site preparation, that doesn't really have much to do with the, the fine tuning that might happen later, depending on what our budget is.
Yeah.
So how much are we looking at potentially if we had a redesign? What would you say?
If we went forward with the schedule that I was proposing?
Say we had a design and we had to redesign, what's our potential?
Oh, you had to redesign?
Yeah, I mean, are we moving that much, that far forward?
The more you have to go back and redo stuff, you know, the, the more it costs you in engineering, is basically a way to pay, it's hard to say about percentages or any of that, because it'll just be man-hours at that point, when engineers change something, it's just you're paying that $150 an hour.
So how far forward are we moving with Burbak if we did approve it?
Well, they would be, we'd be moving towards the pool that we had picked, and I think it's 12, version 12, would be the final, we just engineer version 12. We already, I think, well, 12 versions, went through 12 versions to get to version 12. So I think, it's smartly, we did a lot of that in the early process, which we're about to do.
Is that the one we advertised to the public?
And that's what's about to go on for the indoor building, is basically, you know, this big...
For that reason, I feel pretty okay about moving forward, because, again, that's what we promised we'd build, so I don't, I don't know how much we could change anyway if we wanted to down the road, because we, we, I mean, I remember, you know, spelled out all the different features this pool would have, and that's what we used in fundraising, so if that's the pool we're talking about, then I, I say we have to move forward, we actually don't have a choice, if we're gonna make good on delivering what we promised to the, the donors.
Yeah, it's not my date, I'll make that clear, it's the date I read in the paper when I got here. Somebody showed me an old newspaper clipping by way of prodding me and saying, when's this gonna be done? You know, I said, well, I don't know. I said, yeah, you do!
Pledge now, pledge now and we'll have it done.
I'm okay, however council wants to do it, I'm okay, it's your timeline, it's not mine.
We have to do that pool, we don't have to do 2014.
Yeah.
But...
What's two weeks?
Well, the point is, the pool design isn't really negotiable, from my understanding. Not really. Not if we want the pledges to come through.
Still waiting for a motion to either approve this plan or deny the plan.
I would make a motion to approve the plan as set forth by Kevin in his timeline.
Okay, motion by Hamilton. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Second by Hallie. Any other questions, discussion? Matt, please call and roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Frederick Halen?
Yes.
Revalinsky?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Boyer?
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Sorry, Kevin.
So, the, the request then is to work on the, um, on, on funding this for, going forward for the next few months, and how was, how was that gonna be accomplished at this point in time? Now, because you, you ran through some numbers, 850,000 was your request.
That was the early number, they would include the purchase of the property, Your Honor, as well as all these various other, um, engineering, site engineering and, and building plan engineering and all that. I think what we're gonna have to do is basically get this pro forma from the, the group, just when their money's coming in more definitively, so we'll know what we need to do. Basically, you've given me the direction to do this, I gotta figure out how to do it. So there's a combination of funding that we'll use to do that, some of it may indeed be volunteer money and some of it may not be, but we'll make it work as best we can and stick it closely as we can to that timeline. But it really, tonight has been very good in a sense, because it made us realize that, that perhaps council is not that big of a hurry, and that feels actually pretty good is not that big of a hurry and that feels actually pretty good if you're us because that's a lot of complicated things we're doing over the next two to three months. So it's nice that we'll be, we will be able to take kind of a, what I'm, you know, getting from you guys is a little bit more relaxed approach about that timeline and August not being that important.
So we just, I think to kind of put closure to this, then we will ask you to, obviously, I think we have some good numbers on our architectural work for the, from the bids that you're going to be interviewing, companies you're going to be interviewing on Wednesday or Thursday. Burbach, obviously, we can defer those costs. So again, I think in terms of what we're going to be asking the committee to help participate in is going to be just a set of numbers that we are going to need on a short-term basis. Again, because I don't want to put the burden on the private group to go out and try and raise, you know, a half a million dollars or $600,000 or whatever it is we think we're going to need for the rest of the year. So at this point in time, I think that would be the next step is just to find out what those, what those fees are going to be between, say, now and August, okay? And thank you again very much. We appreciate everything that you're doing on this and look forward to our continued partnership and the success of our county vote in August. Okay, council, we'll move on then to a RagBri report.
Was there one more action item there?
No, well, I think that takes care of the aquatics design is taken care of and that, so.
Presume that we're going to go ahead with that.
All right. Just briefly, RagBri plans are moving forward, everything's coming together nicely. We will need hundreds of volunteers that day, so keep that in mind if you're interested or you know someone who's interested. More on that later. The main issue I wanted to talk about tonight was we passed an ordinance here in March that laid out fees for vendors, anyone who wanted to sell, well, I guess specifically food on the day of RagBri, July 26th. Those fees were recommended by the RagBri organizing committee out of Des Moines, been doing this for decades. We rounded them down in some cases, but some people feel they're still too high. There's talk of people saying, well, I'm going to go ahead and sell without a license, without paying the fee. And Chief Harvey's written on the route before and we were talking about this in our committee meeting. That could be a really bad move because the health inspector and the RagBri organizers themselves will shut down anyone who doesn't have the vendor license for the day, and it's really a health concern. They cannot risk poisoning their 10,000 riders, the people who paid them, to be in this event. So they're very strict. Chief Harvey, you told me that you saw lemonade stands getting closed down?
Yeah, I mean, there's little girls selling lemonade and they just said, you're not an authorized vendor. I'm sorry.
So not to, not to.
The arrest was a little unnecessary, though, you know, in little cups, that was not right.
Connie would definitely not be in favor of that.
But if they know it going in, and, you know, before somebody invests, invests a whole lot of money.
There it is, that's what we're saying.
Before someone invests a whole lot of money thinking that they're going to make some money on this, we're trying to preclude them losing a bunch of money.
Yep.
By putting this out ahead of time.
Exactly. If you, you know, you cook something at home and it's not a certified kitchen, then you're going to get shut down and you're not going to be able to sell and you're going to have a lot of leftovers and whatever you made is going to, you're going to get fed up with it. So we don't want that to happen. We want people to either pay the vendor fee and be approved, and then we're going to actually advertise those people and put them in a really good placement. And if you're a nonprofit and you think that, you know, 350 is too much, you can share a space with other nonprofits. There's a lot of money to be made if it's done properly, but we just don't want to see people trying to skirt around the regulations only to end up losing money. So that's my public service announcement of the night.
And how are we planning to police that from our side prior to?
Mention the police, it's one way.
No, that's the day of. What they're trying, they're trying to do is with Tammy, who's in charge of the vendors, is get all this information out to everybody. And the second part of what Michael didn't go into is there's already vendors, outside vendors, that are wanting to come in and participate. So if the civic organizations or the groups within town doesn't step up to the plate and say, hey, I'm making this, they're going to let somebody from outside our community come in and make that money. So they're trying to give first dibs to our community that will benefit from having RagBri come here first before they accept an outside vendor.
Yeah, and we had, the deadline was through May. We wanted to hear from the local people who were interested before opening it up to these outside vendors. So that's, yeah, that's the timeliness of it is why we're bringing it up now, is if you're interested, contact Tammy Jones, you can go to FairfieldRagBri.com.
Vendors?
Vendors, there's a vendors button, it's got the forums and all that, so. But if you try to go around the system, you're probably going to lose money.
I can tell you from Packwood's point of view, because I talked to somebody that did it, that all their civic organizations pulled together and they combined their license into one group, so they paid one vendor's fee and then they split it out evenly. And that city, when it went from Mount Pleasant, or from Atomoa to Mount Pleasant, they profited almost $10,000. So, I mean, there's a financial incentive there, you know, it's going to cost you $350 for a licensed vendor fee, but the potential to make money as long as you don't get overly greedy and have astronomical.
Orbit.
Well, or fees for whatever it is that you're selling is there. And we're not going to have another event for, another opportunity for people to make this much money at one time.
10,000, 15,000, 20,000 people, the economic impact is about $3 million in our town for that event. So there's a lot of money to be made and we want our local organizations to be part of that, but you just have to make sure you do it properly. If anyone sells coconut water, I tell you, it's a lot of money to be made in coconut water for bike riders. I might just do it.
All right, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to assume you don't have any vested interest in coconut water.
I didn't show the brand label.
Thank you, Michael, for the report. Next, we'll move on to our city administrator report, and we have a letter from our water superintendent, Carl. Is Carl still here?
Carl could not make it tonight and asked me to read this very poignant and touching letter. Sorry. He is, he's sweet. Mary LaFrances expressed her concern about cancer-causing agents that could be from our water at a council, at a city council meeting. At the council's request, we collected a sample and sent it to the university hygienic laboratory for sample results. As I understand it, the quaint limit?
Quant.
Quant limit, sorry, is the smallest amount that the equipment will measure. So the results show that none of these constituents are in our water as far as can be measured. Hope this will help ease minds. If you have questions, please give me a call. The only other place we have to test for different kinds of contaminants that are quite commonly tested for today would be in our wastewater department, which we are going to be testing in 20,000 ways to Sunday for at least the next 18 years down there. So we should be running those tests over the next couple, three, four months. We're interested now that we have run the inlets to basically run the alleys and see what occurs. But so far, I do also want to reiterate something, or at least re-encourage people to feel good about what's going on with our wastewater because we've had some Facebook contacts on there recently talking about the water quality and this. But in talking to Sean, I mean, he could go, if you want to go at length into it, I think that would be a good update right quick from your department, Sean, but do you want to stand up and talk about the different tests, including the, almost a canary-type test with guppies? I think it's guppy, the guppy test?
I don't say that.
Which I think I've been in that one a couple times myself, but.
Yeah, anytime we have an overflow, a lot of the tests, we take grab samples, especially at the plant. Some of the grab samples we take is a BOD5, biological oxygen demand. We check that. That tells you how much contaminants, the quantity is in the water. That's being done. We also do DO test, dissolve oxygen. We test for E. coli. I mean, there's, the tests just go on and on, pH, temperature. There's so many of this that qualifies this. A lot of times when we do test this, when we have overflows, the water previous to the overflow is actually usually the same, if not sometimes higher, than E. coli limits and what we're overflowing. The water that's coming through with the overflows, it's still, it's still contaminous. I mean, we still have problems, it still has to be reported. But the E. coli and the levels, the harmful levels, is so low because it is so diluted. A lot of times, the E. coli limit coming out of an overflow is actually less than our daily limit that we're allowed in any given day. So it's, and that's one thing that we keep very highly track of. We're very, very transparent with any of our testings. We test for everything and anything, more than we have to. We spend extra money by doing that. But that gives us the basis to be able to provide the information that we are, why we're moving forward in this situation that we are, whether we're making repairs to the plant, to the systems. It gives them a little bit of, I guess, a warm, fuzzy feeling that we are trying, we definitely are.
But we're all, we're hoping to look into some of these pharmaceutical contaminants that are being so common in a lot of people's water